Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with an invocation from Dr. Frank R. McClarty, pastor of Holy Temple Baptist Church, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Annabelle Cherian of Girl Scouts Troop 570. Please stand.
Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come. Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for this great assembly of these elected officials. We thank you, Father, for the efforts that they have put forth to lead our city in a great way. We thank you for our mayor and his leadership and all of the council. And now, Lord, we know that their tasks are great and sometimes they're challenging. But, Lord, we pray now that you would guide them as they lead our city and make decisions for our city. And then, Lord, we ask that you would give them peace in the decisions that they make. And then, we as citizens, Lord, help us to receive and accept the decisions that have been made for the betterment of our city. And then, Father, we pray for unity among our city elected officials, that it may be a model for all of the cities that make up this great country in which we live in. And, Lord, we'll be so very careful to give you all glory, honor, and praise, for yours truly is the kingdom, the power, and the glory, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for the just world.
Well, thank you, Dr. McClarty, and thank you, Annabelle. All right, I call this meeting of the City Council to order, and we do have one presentation, and that is Fire Prevention Month. And if our friends from the fire department would join me down front. Well, of course, we are trying to prevent fires 12 months out of the year, but we like to bring extra special attention to it once a year here in October. And so, to learn a little bit more about Fire Prevention Month, I would ask the clerk to read this proclamation.
Whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department responded to 92,506 calls for emergency assistance in 2021. And whereas during that same year, fire killed eight of our citizens and injured three others. And whereas property loss in 2021 due to fire was approximately $34 million. And whereas the men and women of the Oklahoma City Fire Department are witness to the loss and devastation caused by fire firsthand, not only for those citizens who have lost loved ones or their homes and belongings to fire, but for their coworkers injured or killed in the line of duty. And whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department considers fire prevention as critical as fire suppression and is actively engaged in public education to prevent the frequency and severity of fires. And whereas the theme for this year's public education campaign is Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. And whereas the Oklahoma City Fire Department recommends that every household have a home escape plan, everyone should have working smoke alarms to aid in escaping a structure fire, families should have a meeting place established outside to account for household members, there should be at least two escape routes from every room, and household members should regularly practice their home escape plan. Now, therefore, I, David Holt, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 to be Fire Prevention Month in Oklahoma City.
Thank you. And some very practical advice there. And we sure appreciate everything that the men and women of our fire department do. And I'm also conscious of and appreciative of the prevention work that you guys do. Obviously, that is better than suppression as the proclamation said. So, we'd love to hear a few more words about that from our fire chief, Richard Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Council. As always, we appreciate the support from our city leaders and our residents who support us every day. Again, this is really just following through on the council priorities of assuring we have a safe, secure, and thriving neighborhoods. And our staff really work hard on this. This is our public education staff here, and some from code enforcement, some fire investigations, our fire prevention staff. They do an outstanding job 365 days a year of making sure our city is safe. But this month is where we come together and we really focus on that area. And we really empower our residents to be involved in that. And we ask that they do that, just like we said, make sure you have a working smoke alarm. We provide free smoke alarms and install up to code, so it's 316 beep, if you call that free smoke alarm. And that's important for us because, just as the mayor said, it's about prevention. When we respond, we actually fail. We want to be preventing these fires. And this is an opportunity just to focus this month. And I appreciate our staff and the 1,017 firefighters that we have that do this every day. But these people right here that you see in front of you, that is their goal and sole purpose of what they do. And I really appreciate what they do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's hear it for our fire department. Okay, we have no other items from Office of the Mayor, nor any items from council. So, we'll proceed to item five, which is City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have the MC Care report on, and this is just the update when we have the open enrollment for MC Care in September of each year. And so, not a lot of significant changes here. Still have the situation where we actually had more who signed up than those who dropped out. But it's on new ownership sometimes that we don't have as high a participation rate. So, something that we want to continue to focus on. But I think still, overall, the numbers are good and have stayed fairly steady. We do have, you know, we presented, we introduced the capital improvements plan at last meeting. We have a couple of presentations this morning. Chris Browning is going to present with Utilities Department Capital Budget, and then Melinda McMillan-Miller will present the Parks Department Capital Budget.
Good morning, Chris Browning, Utilities Director. Appreciate the opportunity to present the Water Utilities Fiscal Year, Proposed Fiscal Year 2023 through 2027 Capital Improvement Plan to you all this morning. The total amount of the plan is $1.75 billion for the next five years. Water is $1.29 billion. The sewer is $433 million, and solid waste management is $26 million. The water capital improvement plan at $1.29 billion primarily is the water supply, the Etoka Pipeline. That's $926 million. General improvement, $16 million. And then, the resiliency and reliability of our system, those improvements total $351 million. So, on the Etoka Pipeline, it's a multi-year project. We got started a little bit late, but we're catching up. We have awarded three sections, the Canadian River Crossing, and then two other sections that are in red, the Ada to Canadian River, and then the Etoka to Colgate Section. And then, in a couple of weeks, we're going to be awarding the Stonewall to Ada Section. There are nine sections total. We hope to award two, maybe three per year, depending on the bids and the revenues coming in. Hopefully, we'll have the entire pipeline built and all the pump stations built within the next five to six years. So, the water system reliability and resiliency includes the western interconnection of the Hefner and Draper Water Treatment Plant. So, that's treated water. It's not raw water that we pump from Lake Draper to Lake Hefner. That's actually treated water. Ultimately, most of the water will be treated at the Draper Water Treatment Facility. About 75% to 80% of our water will come from that facility, and the remaining from Hefner. Right now, it's about a two-to-one differential, where two-thirds comes from Draper and one-third from Hefner. This pipeline, in addition to supplying water to a bigger percentage of the city, also enables either plant to serve the city in the event of a disaster at one or the other plants. Now, the water pressures may not be the same as they normally would, but at least we would have water supply throughout the city from either plant. So, we have three segments left. Two will be, all three will be awarded within this fiscal year and hopefully completed within the next couple of years. So, that project will be completed. Water Treatment Facility Improvements, our two water treatment plants were built in the, Hefner in the 50s and Draper in the 60s, and they're aging a bit, and some of the components need to be upgraded. We just built two new clearwells, about 10 million gallons of storage, very, very important for those events that require quite a bit of water demand, particularly the deep freeze last year when we had an inordinate amount of water demand in the system. And then, in the summertime, if there were to be a main break, those clearwells are very significant in our ability to restore service quickly. Water Main Replacements, some of our pipelines are 100 years old and not as reliable as they used to be. For the most part, our older pipes are 50 to 60 years old. So, we replace about 10 to 15 miles a year to ensure reliability in our water distribution system. And then, we've started a project to automate our meters for reliability and ease in reading, particularly in inclement weather. We will be able to just drive by with a device in the car, and it automatically picks up the meter read. So, that project is moving along. And then, finally, we have the 60-inch water main replacement project where Tinker Air Force Base is closing a portion of Douglas, and we need to relay that line around that area. So, we're replacing that line. And on the, in addition to just replacing the line, a lot of the areas down there don't have public water supply. So, we'll be able to serve some areas with public water supply that are currently on wells. The wastewater capital improvement plan is proposed $432 million. I think this is a rounding error. It's actually $433 million. But the largest percentage is resiliency and reliability, again, $414 million. And our wastewater plants have aged as well. Many of them have had updates, but those were in the 70s and 80s. So, some of the infrastructure needs to be updated. Now, this does not include the South Canadian Wastewater Treatment Facility, which was awarded a few months back. And we're actually replacing the entire plant. But these are improvements in the other wastewater treatment facilities. And then, general improvements, $18 million. So, the treatment plant upgrades include the North Canadian Deer Creek and Chisholm Creek, where just some of the components are aged, mechanical components worn beyond their useful life, and we'll be replacing those components over the next few years. Again, main replacements, aged infrastructure, some of our sewer system is 50, 60, 70 years old. The difference here is we're able to actually pinpoint those areas that need to be replaced because we have the technology now to actually put a camera in the sewer line and visually see where we may have a point of failure and replace those segments accordingly. So, we do about 15 miles a year. And then, we've developed the Asset Management Program, which, the Condition Assessment Program, is that visual inspection of the sewer system. And we've also done some visual inspection on our water mains as well with some newer technology. So, it's a proactive program so that we can repair things before they break rather than after they fail. And then, finally, is the Solid Waste Management Capital Improvement Plan, $26 million, and that's primarily trucks and carts. So, this year has been a challenging year for the capital improvement program. Material prices have increased significantly. We were generally looking at our capital budget twice a year to see if our projects were estimated properly and we had the right revenue stream to be able to bid and award those projects. Now, we're doing it quarterly and sometimes monthly. And an example is, we had programmed the South Canadian Wastewater Plant to be about $140 million. That was early this year. Spring, the price went up to about $170. Just before bids, the price went up to about $180, is the best estimate from the engineers, and the project bid at $215. So, we have to work really, really hard to, first of all, design the projects so that we are able to build them within the allotted revenues that we have available to us, and also manage our funds based on some of these increases that we're seeing.
I think that's a really good point to be made, that really what we're doing here is looking at the Capital Improvements Plan. So, it's a plan, it's a five-year plan that we approve every other year. Departments then have individual capital improvements budgets that they do every year. So, the plan itself, we have the ability to flex and make changes and adjustments to the plan as needs change or issues are identified, like what Chris is describing. We even sometimes have to make adjustments within our budget. You know, this could even affect the percentage that they're doing with debt versus what we're doing with cash. And so, they're managing all their projects. And when they have one project like this that goes up in cost significantly, other decisions have to be made, what we're doing on other projects. I appreciate the work all the departments do to manage this. But this is the plan that then guides us in our budgeting, and all of those are flexible as we go along and we make adjustments as needs change.
Exactly. And then, secondly, labor shortages and supply chain challenges have caused us to take a look at the actual project schedule. And we've had to become very, very flexible in those schedules. If not, the prices would be even higher than they are today. So, we're trying to manage material costs and labor and supply chain challenges as well. So, we've come up with some creative solutions. We're trying to share the risk with some of the contractors, so that we have indexed, say, the raw materials. So, on the Etoka Pipeline, we actually bid the pipe. We signed the contract for the pipe in 2018. So, we're going to supply the pipe. That did a couple of things. First of all, we save sales tax on that pipe, which it's about $200 million worth of pipe. So, that's a lot of sales tax. Secondly, we can control the bidding a little bit better if we buy the material. So, we broke the pipe down into nine segments. In doing that, plus buying the pipe, we can actually attract more contractors to bid on these projects. Otherwise, it would be just a huge, huge project, a billion-dollar project. That would limit the number of contractors eligible to bid on this project. So, we did that. And so, we have a CPI adjustment. In addition to that, we have a steel index adjustment. So, whatever the market is for the raw material, we pay that price. So, when we bid it, it was about $800. In this past January, it was $1,900. So, that wasn't such a good idea. But now, it's down to about $750. So, we're doing okay again on the material. The other thing that seems to be very, very expensive is concrete. In addition, aluminum, copper for electrical components. So, all those things, we're trying to work with the contractors to see how we can minimize the risk. The other thing on these big pipeline projects is fuel. I mean, to put a 72-inch pipe in the ground, you dig a big hole, and most of that dirt doesn't go back in the hole. It has to go somewhere else. So, fuel costs are significant on those projects. So, indexing fuel is another thing that we're trying to do. So, we're trying to work with the contractors to help us get the best prices possible so that we can bid these jobs and get them built. Now, unfortunately, we did have to push a few projects out. We are currently leasing generators for Hefner. We planned to build permanent generators at Hefner like we have at Draper, but we had to push that project out. And then, I told you earlier that we built two clearwells at Draper, and we have decommissioned the old two clearwells. We plan to build at least one of those in the next five years. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that. We had to push the second one out. We were going to build an operations facility out at Fifth and Penn. That one's been postponed as well. The existing Etoka Pipeline, when the new one goes into operation, we plan to rehabilitate the existing pipeline. We may have to wait a bit, but the good thing is the new pipeline will enable us to bring all of our permitted, current permitted water supply from southeast Oklahoma to Oklahoma City for use. And then, we were going to add an additional generator at Draper for redundancy purposes. Now, on the bright side, there are a number of grants that may be available to us in the foreseeable future. And if we're successful in bringing some of that grant money into Oklahoma City and using it on our water projects, we'll be able to bring some of these projects back in within the next five years. And so, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the Water Utilities Capital Plan.
Chris, as you know, I recently got to go down to Etoka and tense meetings and took a tour of the Lake Etoka and McGee Creek. And the one thing that sits out in my mind, and I think everybody should look at, go take a look at this, this is an incredibly complex project, the 72-inch Etoka Pipeline. And I think it's the largest project utilities has ever attempted in its history. But my point is, and what I want you to tell the listener, how long will this provide us adequate water for our kids and grandkids into the future?
So, right now, we have available 136,000 acre feet. And with the Sardis water, it'd be about 250,000 acre feet. That will be available in 2035. So, given the projected population of 2 million in the metro area, keep in mind, we serve right now about 1.4 million people. Although our population is half that, we serve 18 other cities and rural water districts. So, the permitted water is for 2 million people. So, right now, the projection is 2060. However, we're doing some other things behind the scenes where we have a very aggressive water conservation program. And we have reduced the actual usage per account by about 22% in the last six years. So, what we're trying to do is stretch that water further. So, right now, the projection is 2 million people in about 2060.
Yeah. The other thing, I was at, last weekend, was at Lake Hefner and saw how far the lake's down.
It's coming up.
It's coming up. It is coming up. But the interconnectivity, which will be done in the next couple of years, that will alleviate and stop that problem from occurring in the future, correct?
It will help minimize the likelihood. But now, we have two different water streams coming into Oklahoma City. The one is from the northwest, the North Canadian. And although we have 80,000 acre feet permitted, the effective yield's only about 55,000, 56,000 acre feet. And in a drought, it's about 25,000 to 30,000 acre feet. So, we do have storage at Canton so that we can supplement. But the likelihood of getting 80,000 acre feet down the North Canadian is not very high. So, the good thing is, we can bring more water in from Draper. So, the ultimate build-out on the Draper Water Treatment Plant is about 400 million gallons a day. Right now, Hefner's at 100, and that's it. That's it for Hefner. It will not be expanded any further.
I asked an almost identical question to that yesterday. I want to be clear, because I think you were getting at the same thing I thought. The connection to Draper will not put water into Lake Hefner.
That's correct.
It is treated water. So, yeah, I used to think that maybe we were going to have the ability to fill Lake Hefner. That's not what that interconnection does.
That was studied, but it was more effective and efficient to just provide more of the city with treated water than to pump all that water and then have to treat it as well.
It saves expense.
Yes.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, Melinda will give us the presentation on the Parks Department Capital Improvement Plan.
Mr. Smith is pulling this up. Just wanted to thank my staff, Mike Smith, and others for helping us collect all this information today and bring it to you. Our presentation starts on page 76 in your book. So, the Parks Master Plan has multiple goals in it, which is to maintain and improve our physical assets of all of our existing parks, also to develop facilities and programs in existing parks to meet those community needs. And we do that through a lot of community outreach and listening to our residents. We also wish to improve access to all of our existing parks. That could be through sidewalk infrastructure, bus and transit opportunities as well, promote and increase awareness of the value of economic impact of parks, and develop new parks and facilities, and establish agreements and standards for private parks and school parks to help us increase access to all of our residents. All of our park projects are broken out by type. So, the five main types are the new parks and facilities for $26.8 million, improved parks and facilities, golf improvements, trail improvements, and then a chunk of unfunded improvements for a total five-year forecast of $130.6 million. Within those projects, you'll see them broken out by type, whether those are through those parks and facilities that are new or improved, the golf facilities, the trails, which are really important, of course, and then the unfunded improvements, as well as by how they are actually funded. So, through grants, CIP, the Geo Bond Program, unfunded, and of course, the impact fee. Some of our park projects by location are over a map. As you know, they're pretty spread out, but you'll kind of see on that map with the yellows are those are the funded improvements, and then the reds are the unfunded improvements that we've requested. And so, some of our funded improvements, those would be the new Willa D. Johnson Recreation Center, which is currently under construction. We are expecting to hopefully have a good opening date and weekend celebration in very early April. Councilwoman Nice, I'll talk to you about that one. The project is about $17.5 million out of the 2017 Geo Bond Program. In Woodson Park, you'll probably have seen the amount of dirt being moved right now, that we are building six new softball fields and four soccer fields on the south half of Woodson Park east of I-44. That's a great improvement that we're very excited to have, and really increases the capacity for sports in that part of our city. The Winslow, who is in Hunt Sports Complex, we're adding a lot of new lighting to those fields so that, again, will just extend the amount of play and accessibility for our residents and the children to be able to play soccer and all sorts of other sports, late into the evening hours, way past darkfall. In Edwards Park, we're planning on adding two more football fields to that park. So, we'll have a total of four football fields that will be lit with concession fencing and, of course, seating for all those family members who want to come out and watch their kids and grandkids and nieces, nephews play. In Will Rogers Gardens, then we also have a funded improvement to help starting to replace some of the historic structures in that park. Some of those are the red rock shelters that were built as part of the WPA projects in the 20s. Also, we just need to add some new security perimeter fencing, drainage improvements, and of course, a new bridge that desperately is needed to get across some of those really gnarly rock cobblestones around the Bald Cypress areas. In Early Wine Park, we have the Golf Course Clubhouse that's currently under construction. You'll see that with not only the clubhouse itself, but also the covered driving range facility that will be there. We have just completed the Hefner Golf Course irrigation project. The entire South Course, entire South Course's irrigation system was probably about 56 The entire south course, entire south course's irrigation system was probably about 56,000 years old. It was concrete irrigation pipe, which is really not conducive for age in the ground. So, all that has been updated and installed, and that is now working. And we hope to have that south course open here in the very first part of the year. Oklahoma River Greenway Trail, we're about 85-ish percent completed with that construction project. We're waiting on some bridges and some last-minute little details. But that'll be a great connection between the South River Trail up to the Katy Trail at Douglas Park. The Deep Fork Greenway Trail, we got those bids back. And like all things that Mr. Browning was referring to, of course, costs are increasing. There's a lot of concrete in this project, a lot of steel, and a lot of engineering acrobatics that are going to have to be done. So, we've evaluated that project, and we are excited to be able to award that project very shortly soon. The Greenway Trail will be able to connect the Katy Trail Grand Trail all the way through the Deep Fork River Corridor up to Grand Boulevard by the Chesapeake Energy Center. You also may have, have noticed and seen the Trail Wayfinding and Signage Program that is being installed. We are just waiting on the couple more signs to be, to come in. They're actually manufactured in Texas. Those signs will be delivered here very shortly, and those are the actual trail rules, trail etiquette, signage, trail maps. Those are there. They're, that's all we're waiting for right now at that point. And then, also, the wayfinding web application where trail users can be on their digital device and be able to see exactly where they're at on their phone. That's a new feature that we're, we're trying to break it now. It's in beta testing. So, we're hoping to launch that about the exact same time that we'll have the signage completed too. And last but certainly not least, our Will Rogers Park Family Aquatic Center had a great big leak happen underneath the big bathtub of the deep well. And so, that is actually in the process of being replaced. Those pipes are being replaced now, and that will be reconstructed and back open again for summer enjoyment. So, on to some of our unfunded requests that we have. One of those is about our playgrounds. So, we have so many playgrounds in our system that a lot of them are still the older style where either they don't have a safety surface, a couple of them are very old, and others have that wood fiber mulch safety surface underneath them. Not ideal. We'd like to upgrade all of our playground safety surfaces with the rubberized Pebble Flex you'll see in this photo here. And trail amenities, some of our larger requests, as we are developing these trails, and we will have completed 100 full miles of off-street bicycle dedicated and running facilities, those all need amenities just to make people comfortable as they're using it. So, whether it's shade trees, benches, drinking fountains, bicycle repair stations, any creature comforts, those are also on the list of things that we, of course, always want to improve. Out at the Douglas Copper Sports Complex, we are, the north pinwheel, as you can see here, the north pinwheel for softball fields are currently under construction, as well as the large concession building. We would like to then redo the south pinwheel. And so, that project is an unfunded request at this time. In Route 66 Park, out in Ward 1, we have some really great fishing features out in that park, as well as a boardwalk and walking trails. But those boardwalks are in need of being replaced. And so, they are wood over steel decking on the bridges, and we'd like to get all that wood replaced with the actual plastic Trex decking, which will last us a whole lot longer than the current wood will as it rots. So, that is one of our unfunded requests too. As Hefner Lake water level is down, it's giving us an opportunity to really look at the Stars and Stripes Plaza there on the, which would be the north shore of Stars and Stripes Park, but it's on the south shore of the reservoir. Over the wind and everything from the north, as we get winter storms, it really splashes up and erodes out all the capstones around that, around that plaza. And so, we would like to go back into that plaza and really shore that up, no pun intended, get it reinforced and get the engineering back on track and bring the stonework back up, just to help ensure that we won't have further damage to that shoreline. That's really fast, because I told Craig I wouldn't take too long. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Melinda?
Yes, ma'am.
Also, thank you back, thank you back. Would it be possible with this presentation to secure the slide that's the, the Deep Fork Katy Trail, like the, the imagery from that slide?
Sure.
Am I saying that right? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, just making sure, so I thought it might be confusing. That is a beautiful project, and it's so important, as you know, I was just talking to Councilman Carter about this, like, it's going to provide, as you know, like, this connection from the south part of Ward 2 in terms of bike infrastructure to the north part at a very critical place that we've been, residents have been asking for it for so long, right there at I-44. And so, to see this infrastructure actually go under I-44 and connect from Bishop McGuinness, Zachary Taylor Neighborhood, a crossover to, you know, Flips and Trader Joe's and OKC Ballet, because there's more infrastructure improvements coming up on that north side of Classen. I mean, it's just, I really think it's a game changer and one of the most exciting projects we have coming. So, I really appreciate your stewardship of it, and I just want to share that image with residents to kind of make something less abstract for them.
Exactly. Yeah, we have those highways and rivers. It has become automatic barriers. And so, I love the engineering of this project going under 235, that new interchange that ODOT just completed with 235 and I-44. We were kind of waiting a little bit for that to get completed, and now that it's done, that trail will go right underneath it. And so, it'll just be this great connectivity for all those residents to really be able to bridge the gap from all those wards now. We'll have a full circle, and I think we're all really excited about having that completed. All right. Thank you.
Hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Like, don't, don't you move.
Pivot, pivot, pivot.
Don't move. I wanted to say thank you for the presentation. One of my, my asks, as we look at improvements and things that are, are taking place, is lighting.
Yes.
It is very critical, especially for some of our core parks. And I know, I, I bring up mine in particular, Edwards, it is dark. And for that to be one of our premier parks, I'm curious, I know I didn't see that as far as lighting, I saw the fields, but how, what would we need to do to make sure, at least for our core parks, not to say all of them don't need it, because they do, but how can we ensure some of those premier parks are going to get some of those lighting infrastructure needs that they, they have to have in order for our folks to feel safe at these, these said parks? And also, I wanted to talk to you a little later about Katy Trail and some of the things that we've been seeing. And, and as a, and as a member of the Trail Advisory Board, I must say, I'm extremely excited to see the wayfinding signs, because we went through a long process to make sure those were perfect for, for our residents and for our city. And to see them just pop up in random places, it was like, ooh, it's Christmas. There's one, there's one. So, to be able to see that, it's, it's really exciting. So, now, just to see the ones that are on, on the floor as far as the trail is concerned, looking forward to that as well. But if you can help me with those two asks, I'd be greatly appreciative.
Yes, absolutely. And the lighting, I'm really hoping that, what I didn't mention was, of course, Maps 4 for neighborhood parks and community parks. And so, we're really, as we're starting engagement with the communities and asking feedback from all the residents for what would they like to see in their neighborhood and community parks, lighting has been coming up in conversations too. So, I'm really hoping that with playgrounds and lighting and all of those features, that we can really start building some of that basic infrastructure that has been long overdue to be improved. Yeah, totally agree.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On Woodson Park?
Yes.
You know, with the new soccer fields and softball fields, what became of the football fields that were on the east side of, of I-44?
Right. So, the football fields were, they were removed as we do the full overall improvement. But what goes back in is the six softball fields and four soccer fields. But those soccer fields are, I really should call them just rectangular playing fields. They're flexible so that we can put in goalposts for football, or we can play soccer. They're not quite wide enough for rugby, but we can do flag football and other sports that you would typically play on a rectangular field. So, at the end of the day, once this project is done, we'll be able to re-accommodate those four football fields to the new four rectangular fields.
Great. In respect to lighting, does the city pay for the installation of lights within a park, or does OGN-E provide those?
It can go either way. It really depends on what the facility that we would need to use. We're really trying to focus a lot on renewable energy for lighting, because of course, even if OGN-E would install those lights, we still pay a light bill. And so, we're trying to really look at solar lighting as much as possible and where appropriate. It's really been effective even on our trails. So, the North River Trail, South River Trail, West River Trail, and Katy Trail are having all solar lighting installed on those trails to help with some of those areas that are really difficult to get into.
Right.
A lot of the new solar lighting even can be core-drilled in place. So, you're not having to trench and dig up a bunch of areas of the park so that you're not disrupting more areas, potentially, you know, eliminating problems with cutting electrical lines, irrigation lines, et cetera. So, a little less intrusive.
So, can you explain briefly how that works, those, those types of lights?
Yep. So, it depends on which park it is. So, for example, Memorial Park up here on Classen and 36th Street, that was one that has OGN-E installed those lights, but we still, the city still pays for the lighting itself. OGN-E installed those lights.
Right.
And then, we pay the bill for that. Other park locations, if it's something where we don't want to tear it up and it's really appropriate for solar lighting, the, the city pays for those lights ourselves and, and pays a contractor to install those.
No, I meant, could you explain how solar lighting works?
Oh, solar lighting.
So, you need certain number of hours of daylight to absorb the sunlight?
Right. Exactly. So, like, today and yesterday, we've had a lot of cloudy weather, so we may not have as bright of a charge. And it will take those solar panels, those collector units at the top of the light fixtures, several hours during the day to collect that energy, but then, of course, dissipate it overnight. What's nice about the new technology of some of these solar lights is they have actually two, I'll call them light bulbs, if you would, two LEDs on it. So, when it detects motion, both will illuminate. When there's no motion, one will go out and just leave one lit, so it gives a dimmer.
Yeah.
So, that basically, they're extending and expanding the capacity for the amount of time for the lights to be illuminated.
That's great.
I drove into one of the parks the other night.
Uh huh.
As I was driving, I was, I said, it seemed like the light just got brighter when we drove under it.
Yeah.
And we drove to the next one, and it kept doing that. And I noticed that all along, I mean, it was a full trail of lights, I think it was Wiley Post.
Yes.
There was a full trail of lights through there that it would get brighter as you got to where you needed them.
Exactly.
I hadn't seen, seen that before.
Do you know, or do you know, has any of that technology been placed in city street lights? Because I've noticed that, it seemed like, a couple of times.
I'm not aware of any technology like that being used in any of the streets, the city street lights.
Interesting. One request, especially since it's not going to come out of our capital budget if you negotiate correctly.
Yes.
South Lakes, the trail around the lake, and I'm stepping on Councilwoman Young's territory, so excuse me, but the, the trail around the lake?
Yes.
On the west side of the park, next to the soccer fields. I'm not suggesting you put as many lights as, say, on Early Wine's track, but a few more would certainly help, especially given this time of year. And there's a surprising number of people who continue to work well into their 70s and 80s that still use that facility, Early Wine's facilities, for at least minimal exercise. And it would certainly extend the usage of that trail, because now it's dark not too long after 6:00, and it stays dark past 7:00 in the morning. So, we could really use a few more lights. Again, not as much as what you have at Early Wine. And it would be great, so I could see for myself that technology that you're talking about. I think that's great.
Yep.
The solar lights.
It's come so far with solar technology.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's really ingenious.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Melinda.
Okay, thank you.
So, the other, we have pay, claims of payroll on, but we also have our sales and use tax report, another really strong sales tax report. We had 10.9% growth in sales tax. Use tax was 16% growth. For the year, both of them are around, sales tax is around 10, use tax around 16. We're at 11.5 million dollars over budget right now, which is really strong. Russell has cautioned that later in the year that we should see that starting to slow, so we just need to keep an eye on that. We did see on this, on this, we actually saw utilities growing at like 47%. It was very significant growth with utilities, which is primarily through OGN-E and ONG. But we saw retail sales, which is the largest portion of the sales tax, at about 2.7% growth. So, just something to keep an eye on. That may be an indication of some of that slowing that we're seeing, but still seeing a lot of hotel and restaurant growth, seeing a lot of wholesale and business growth in sales tax. And so, still really strong right now. We'll continue to monitor and keep the council updated. That's all I have on city management reports.
All right. Thank you. Okay, item six is Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to requests for uncontested continuances, item seven. So, listed on the agenda are items 11E, 11L, 11M, and 11N, all of which are either deferred, withdrew, or struck. Do you have anything else on today's agenda?
Yes, sir. On page 12, item 11P, 1 and 2, this is on the sign ordinance. We'd had, received a lot of feedback on this, saw that there were a lot of concerns. Legal's looking at this with staff, felt like we needed more time to go back and revisit this, hear what some of the concerns are that were raised, and address those. So, we're going to go ahead and strike this. We'll bring it back. We decided instead of deferring, it was better just to strike it, because we felt like there could be enough change that, that we, we wouldn't want to have to bring that back and do amendments. So, we'd rather just bring back a new ordinance. We would also go back through the review process, and so, it'll just start the process over, so we're going to strike that item.
And so, to be clear, by being struck, it would have, if, when it comes back to council, it would have at least three more meetings?
Correct.
And what I heard internally was, we wouldn't expect to see it here at council this calendar year.
It'll probably be at the beginning of next calendar year sometime.
Okay. I see. As you were, as you were saying.
Item E, page 13, item 11S1 on unsecured structures. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item F, 901 Northwest 12th Street, the owner has secured. Item H, 400 Southeast 15th Street, the owner has secured. Item I, 1843 Northeast 26th Street, the owner has secured. Item J, 1232 Northeast 34th Street, the owner has secured. Item L, 526 Southeast 45th Street, the owner has secured. Item O, 1005 Southwest 70th Street, to re-notify the new owner. Item Q, 11201 Northwest 112th Street, the owner has secured. On abandoned housing, still on page 13, item 11T1, all of these were already listed up here, so I'm not going to give the reason for it. But item E, 400 Southeast 15th. Item F, 1843 Northeast 26th Street. Item J, 1232 Northeast 34th Street. Item, I'm at G. Item J, 1005 Southwest 70th Street. And item K, 11201 Northwest 112th Street. All those are stricken from the agenda. So, that was E, F, G, J, and K.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
All right. That brings us to item eight, revocable permits and events. We have item A, revocable permit with Shaadlin Frye for 24 the hard way in November at Bluff Creek Park. No one has signed up to speak. Councilman Stone Cypher.
Yes, I do. I was looking at this event last night, and you can pick, I think it's 26, 24, 12, or six-hour races. And that can be on a hard surface or on dirt. I was suggesting some of us try the 24, maybe 24 minutes. But I'm really excited about this event. It always has a good turnout, and it's very popular within the ward. So, I'd move for its approval at this time.
Well, there we go. All right, we have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll recess council and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through F.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure, on my screen it just said waiting after I seconded the question.
I kind of had this.
That happened to everybody?
Wait, you said you never got to vote?
Well, now it's a blur.
We believe we had you recorded as voting, so.
Because on my screen it just said waiting. I never, I don't know if I ever got to press a thing.
Somehow we got you as a yes.
Perfect.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right. So back on OC-MFA, we have items A through F we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A and B we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the city council, where we find ourselves on page two of your written agenda. Item nine, the consent docket. There are scheduled presentations that will cover, there's kind of one that will cover items S through AC, and then a second presentation specifically on item BK. Are there any other items that a council member wishes to pull out for separate vote or separate comment?
Mayor, can I have BL?
Okay.
Yes, can we pull out item R for a separate vote? I need to recuse myself on that. And then just a discussion on item BB and BC.
Say that again, please.
BB and BC.
Okay. BE and BC. Be, BE and BC.
BB.
BB, okay, and BC.
And AL for me, please.
Is there anything else?
You said there's not a scheduled presentation on item M?
Does not appear so.
So I'd like to hear about that, so I think that's pretty important.
Item M?
M is in maps.
Okay.
And then I'd like to hear about item N, please.
Okay, the next one.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
N is in Nancy. And then item AM, as in maps, like AM. And AV. AV.
V is in Victor?
Victor.
Thank you.
It's in Victor Frankenstein. 'Tis the season. Okay, and that's it? Thanks.
Okay. Why don't we do the separate vote first, just for efficiency? So that'll be item 9R. So this is a resolution approving allocation of emergency solutions grants. We could take a motion just on that item. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, now we are back. We'll take them in order to item M. Councilman Cooper.
Yes, I just want, I wanted to hear kind of a broad understanding of what this will accomplish, and then I'll have a follow-up question, I'm sure. So thank you.
Sure. Good morning, Jeff Butler, Planning Director. This is Housing Affordability Implementation Plan. So as the council's aware, we've recently done a couple of studies. We've done a housing market study. We've done a housing affordability study to kind of assess the state of affordability, housing prices, housing cost burden to our residents in the city. That was done in 2021. And now this next step is to help us as we move forward to prioritize actions that we'll, that we want to take. There are a lot of recommendations in this study. And so the next step is to do this plan, which is a very specific plan, much like the housing strategies, or excuse me, the homelessness strategies that we also have recently done. So that one kind of prioritizes actions. It got a lot of stakeholders together to help figure out, okay, what is it that we're going to do? What actions are we going to take? Who's going to do them? Excuse me, and how are we going to prioritize them? How long is it going to take? This will be very similar to that, only focused on affordable housing. So it'll look at, you know, programs that may need to change, you know, if we want to make any recommendations to legislature on bill changes or authorization that the city needs to do certain things. It'll give us specific language, you need to take this forward. A lot of stakeholder engagement. I expect it'll also inform our next bond, like how, you know, what do we want to do in terms of housing funding? As we all know, we have $10 million that was made available for the 2017 bond. Do we want to do something similar? How would that look? So it's very much about trying to get specific in moving forward in the next several years on housing programs and policy. Excuse me.
That's exciting, that's actually quite exciting to me, as I'm sure you won't be surprised to learn. And I know we've already spoke via email, but this will do what I've been kind of asking for, which is to identify and then help us preserve and rehab the existing housing inventory across the city. I'm, of course, focused on Ward 2, and so it's not to the, I don't mean to, you all should be doing the same, I hope. But I am very interested in preserving the one-to-two-bedroom housing stock, knowing that there's only 3,600, according to this study, that are one-to-two-bedroom available currently, and that we have 19,400 Oklahoma Cityans in need. That's such a gulf, so we've got to preserve what we have, is what I'm saying. And I want to give a very clear example, so I've been saying this, beating that drum for years now. But yesterday, one of my, just to show the stakes, to remind everyone of the stakes, and council, I mean, help me think through this. Yesterday, one of my neighborhood presidents in Helm Farm shared an Instagram post with me on a zoning case that we as council approved. I did not, I said no. We tore down, the developer tore down some homes, several homes, would never tell us how much the cost of the homes were eventually going to be, even though it was the stated concern of Helm Farm residents and of me on this council. I think this meeting went on for an hour. They are selling homes for $850,000 on that lot now. Which teacher? Which public health worker? Which barista? Which firefighter? Which police officer is going to be able to afford that? And this would be forgivable if they were also building homes in that 100 to 150 to $200,000 range. But $850,000 scared the holy heck out of me when I saw that last night. And I've been terrified of it, as you all know, for years. When Councilman Stone and I went on our tour, I told you this is my grave concern. And when I saw that post last night, it became no longer anxiety, but flat-out reality. $850,000 for a house where there used to be housing stock that maybe we could have, that the city could have intervened, we could have identified, we could have rehabbed, we could have preserved, again, for your police officers, for your firefighters, for your teachers, for your nurses. So am I correct that this work will help us to identify that sort of housing?
Yes, we certainly want to look at preserving our existing, you know, what a lot of folks call naturally occurring affordable housing, our housing stock that already exists, that's affordable, that we can continue to maintain and rehabilitate, so it'll stay that way. And as we build new homes, we can, we can, there's enough room in the city, and there, we want to be able to, and we can, provide housing for all income ranges. And so we definitely want to do that. And part of that will be through the zoning code that we're working on right now, making sure that that allows for housing of all ranges, allowing affordable housing in neighborhoods that already exist, and new neighborhoods as well. That's already under, we're working on that already, but we expect this to help us further inform that process as well.
I appreciate your language there, because again, it should exist across income ranges, this housing, as you're pointing out. This should not be, I don't mean this to be an attack on someone who can afford an $850,000 home with payments that are going to be around $4,000 a month. I'm just saying, and, and, right? And we have this housing need that this study lays out. So I really, really appreciate your language there, Director Butler. My second thing is, I know in the homelessness task force, they talk about community land trust. I'd like to learn more with planning staff about what those, what implementation of those could look like. I've been learning a lot more about them in my travels with Embark recently. And I'm wondering, will this be an opportunity for us to kind of lay, better lay the groundwork? I know we already accepted the recommendations when they appeared to us in the homelessness study.
Yes, absolutely. We have several tools in mind that we wanted to drill down and look at in more detail and see how they could work in Oklahoma City, and that's one of them. So the consultant will be tasked with looking at the legal structure that we have, seeing what we could, what we could do, and what we might, what additional enabling legislation might be needed. So yeah, there's, like I said, there are various tools that we're excited to kind of dig into and look at and see how we could make work here, and that's one of them.
Would you mind just describing for us briefly? Because in my travels, I'm learning more about them, like I said, with Embark. But I'm not, I'm not sure a lot of people know what they are. Could you just briefly explain them? Because I think it's a way to address this, to provide a bit of a stall, a stopgap.
Sure. Like a community land trust?
Mm-hmm.
So yes, a community land trust, and they're, you know, different flavors, but typically a community land trust would, would, there would be a site where the land would be owned in common, but the residents would be able to own, excuse me, the specific structure that they, that they reside in. So it means that the appreciation, any appreciation on the land would not really impact the affordability of the homes. And so it's kind of a way for people to have ownership, to be able to have an asset that they can build wealth and own, and it allows for that appreciation to kind of not have a negative impact on people.
I saw this housing in my travels recently. I saw it for myself. It's no longer abstract to me. It's beautiful. People are living in it. It's generating, it's turned renters into homeowners, and it's generating generational wealth for them that they'll be able to, as long as they hold on to that home, pass down to their children. It's what we've been talking about in both the housing study and the homelessness study. And so I think these community land trusts are kind of our, they're kind of our way forward to preserve anything resembling attainability and affordability in places like Helm Farm, while people are gobbling up land on speculation and selling homes for nearly a million dollars, where most of the other homes around there are $100,000 to $200,000. We can preserve that affordability as it is right now if we do these land trusts. So I just think, I just want everyone to be clear, this is a priority for me now. This has become a priority for me. So I need to learn as much as I can to protect this affordability and housing for our city. It's, I'm becoming a passionate person about it, as you can tell. So I'm so excited about this study. Thank you so much.
And to that point, thank you for that. I know as we talk through community land trusts and community land banking, that there are multiple models that a city could use that could actually benefit that resident. So I do want us to keep our minds and thoughts open as we talk through what that could look like for our residents, for them to have that benefit that Councilperson Cooper is talking about. And also, as we've been talking through this affordability study and the constraints that have been left on our residents, I know for me and my ward, my issue has been, and I've talked openly about this, is our housing authority properties and what that looks like in regard to our residents having some type of ownership or resources for that type of ownership, even though they say they do that. It could be a lot better. I think we can all improve everything we do, so it's not an attack on them. But how can we think differently, especially in this affordability part of this conversation? And the fact that now we have so many hotels and/or living facilities that have been abandoned or closed that can be repurposed for housing purposes for that one-to-two-bedroom use that we're talking about and listening through. And I know even with our school district, there's a program that they're working through, I'm not sure if it's still available, for some of those families who are experiencing homelessness or couch surfing, whatever the case may be for their family, that they are working to help find housing for them as well. So there are multiple opportunities for us through this program and this affordability study. So I really hope we will take it carefully and incrementally, but efficiently and effectively to make sure we're doing, doing this right by our city. So my question to you, after all of that, is as soon as we vote on this today, what is the process for those who may want to respond and to respond to the request for proposals?
Sure. So it will, it will go out to, the RFP will be issued immediately, so I believe that'll be tomorrow. Takes time to get out on the website. It'll be through what used to be called BidSync, which is now called Periscope. And I don't recall when the proposals are due. I believe it's roughly 30 days. But that's, that's in the RFP, the Request for Proposals. And all the, all the requirements are in there, what exactly the city needs from respondents. Then after that roughly one-month period, we will then make a selection with a selection committee, as we normally do, just the usual city process. It's probably about a year to an 18-month process for the completion of the plan.
Okay, so next up is still with you, Councilman Cooper, right? Item N?
Yes, just a little bit more details, and maybe if we have some of the imagery, which I know in our packet we do, that we might want to share, but what this Northwest Optimist Performing Arts Center, well, art is going to look like and what that process is going to be. I love this center, and it means a lot to the kids there.
Good morning. I'm Randy Mark's Public Art Project Manager and Planning. Now wait for just a moment for the presentation to be pulled up here. The Northwest Optimist Center at Heffner Park is the home of the Parks Department's oldest and largest performing arts program of any sort, definitely for children. And Mark, if you could go to the next slide, you can see Toby Tobin in the upper-left-hand corner. Toby is the director of the program and has built an absolutely stellar program that has trained hundreds and hundreds of young students in the theater arts over many years. The 1% art project chosen for the center celebrates that work in photographs of young performers in costume. And Mark, if you would go to the next, and here you see some examples of that type of work. Artist MJ, excuse me, artist MJ Alexander will work with Toby on placement of black and white portraits throughout the space. These samples that you see are, will be expanded into about 12 different portraits of young performers, and all together they are titled Larger Than Life. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
No, I just think this is incredible. Thanks for putting these representations on the wall. And you know, what I've learned in touring Northwest Optimist is a lot of these students through theater and the performance arts are learning some of the very same skills that we're short in. I've learned in some of these other, like with the water stuff, like electricians, construction, like as you learn to build sets and light them, those are transferable skills, as it turns out. And so I just think this place is a gem in terms of creativity and creating a career path for our kids. So thank you for showing this.
You're welcome.
And thanks to Toby.
Okay, next up we have a scheduled presentation that's going to cover items S through AC.
That is Justin Henry from the Planning Department. Just to give us an overview, there were just so many of these that were related to bike walk and applications for grants, it just seemed like, just giving an overview of all of these would be a good idea.
Sure, happy to do it. Justin Henry, Transportation Planning Manager for the Planning Department. So the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act that was passed last year, it had additional funding for some of the recurring programs that ACOG, the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, administers. And so the Planning Department has And so the Planning Department has, and Public Works have applied for these regularly in the past, and we've had some recent success, funding some projects like the street enhancement of Northwest 23rd or the, the bike lanes on Southwest 25th. And so this is another set of projects, planning work with Public Works to vet out dozens and dozens of projects over the city, kind of according to what ACOG's selection criteria are. So we've selected a group that are particularly competitive, we believe. Let's see, most of these grants are an 80/20 match system, so it would be 80% federal funding and 20% local funds. An exception would be the safety projects, which are 100% federally funded. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the specific projects, if you have any.
Yes. I'm curious, well, first, let me just say, the Surface Transportation Block Grant's one of my favorites from the federal government. I just want to take a couple moments here. One, I want to remind people, because I didn't understand this until Councilwoman Nice and I traveled to the National League of Cities Conference back in 2020, just before the pandemic, to advocate for funding for, it was her, for grocery stores, me, walkability, these sorts of things. This grant helps fund that, but that grant is our federal tax dollars that we've paid in. And I don't think, I don't think our government class is doing effective enough job of explaining that when we pay federal income tax, that money goes to these departments. The people sitting on these committees shape these grants that then you all, our city departments, apply for, and we're competing with other municipalities across the country. Am I describing that process right?
Yes, and in this, this case, you know, they're required to spend a certain amount of the, the Surface Transportation Block Grant funds in like a metropolitan area. And so they, they use ACOG as like a mechanism to kind of vet those and figure out which of our, you know, our neighboring communities get what funds.
So I say that also to say, the next time someone tells you that, you know, we don't need this, we don't need a federal government, or we don't need money at that, it's funding these improvements to our neighborhoods. And I think we need to be more clear when we say that. Just very important, because we have some people running for office who want to get rid of this sort of funding. I just think that's, that's madness, bringing that tax dollars to our neighborhoods. Okay. My follow-up, though, and this is kind of complicated. I know we're doing such a good job at the city level with Better Streets and Maps For and investing in walkability, bikeability, street safety. I get it. I love it. I've helped write some of it. But I'm worried as I look at Oklahoma Highway Safety, that office, telling us that our city has a significantly higher number of reported cyclist crashes than any other city in the state, and that includes Tulsa. 90 crash reports within city limits and more than 100 in Oklahoma County. And that's even when you weight our population. OKC's per capita numbers dwarf those of Norman. So while I'm very proud of the work we're doing, I'm wondering, as we are applying for these grants, what can we do to, and what are we doing to improve upon the current infrastructure that we're implementing? Because I, somewhere along the way, some safety is still missing, and this reporting is coming to us about pedestrian safety and cyclist safety. So it's even with the improvements. So I'm wanting to learn here, what are we doing? What can we do? What's possible?
Absolutely. Safety, and that's a great question. Safety is, is one of our, our paramount concerns when we look for these kinds of projects. And every one of these projects contains a, some kind of upgrade for bicycle or pedestrian safety, every one of them. So they have ADA ramps, they have, in some spots, they have some bike lanes or a multi-use trail beside the street. They have all, all those kinds of elements, and that's why we kind of looked at it through the lens of Bike Walk this year. You make a great point about we have, you know, well above average on our per capita pedestrian fatalities. Another grant opportunity that the city has applied for is for a Vision Zero grant, which would be to get some federal funding again to try to come up with a plan for reducing our pedestrian fatalities kind of citywide. And so we're waiting excitedly to hear back on whether or not we'll get that, so.
That's, I think to that update, when will we receive that news?
Probably, probably around the end of the year, maybe January.
Okay. Please keep us posted on whether or not we get that. Because I think that's just critical, just critical. At least in my ward, that's a priority for us, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to sort of follow up that by, yeah, just any opportunity we have to make our local dollars go farther is always exciting. Friend of mine and very wonky data advocate, specifically, you know, talking about that safety element and the rise of auto ped crashes and severe injuries or deaths that we've experienced nationwide, but as we've alluded to, in Oklahoma City seems much more acute per capita, is item T. He pulled some data and said that it's seen two pedestrian fatalities in the last year, at least 31 crashes in this year alone, and 28 crashes last year. So I, and I, I have a, I guess I'm curious, like, do we have specific plans for each of these projects that we're requesting? Is it sort of like, it depends on what we hear back, whether it will happen or not? Like, will, will they still happen even if we don't get the federal funding, is I think one question? And then I think as far as specifics on that item T at Meridian and Reno, but then also, what was the other one? Yeah, I think that was the main one that I was curious about. Like, what are those specifics that we might see in each project? I know you alluded to some things, but kind of curious, like when, you know, ADA ramps are great, but even that, even so, like, some of the way that we design, like, the turning, you know, how, how easily people can turn at a higher speed increases those risks of those, those collisions? So I'm just kind of curious, like, are we doing bump outs? Are we doing, you know, different kinds of things that can really increase that safety? Or I think to Councilperson Cooper's point, is it, you know, are we sort of taking a step there, but maybe not taking as much as we could?
Yeah. Again, that's a very, that's a very good point. You mentioned specifically Reno and Meridian on that project. West Reno is an area where we see it's particularly dangerous for pedestrians. There've been several accidents over there, and it's particularly hard to cross. So there's a fairly active bus route there, and we see a lot of bus users, but people have a hard time crossing the street. There's no marked crosswalks, there's no ramps, and there's a very large medium that's kind of an intention for drainage. And so it's very hard to cross. And so one of the things we really hope to accomplish there is to maybe create some pedestrian refuge islands at the end of the medians and get crosswalks to make it easier to cross. You mentioned bump outs. That's something we're specifically looking at on the Northeast Fourth Street project that's on here. We've seen some early drafts of the South of Eighth Plan, and it's kind of something that they call for on the Fourth Street, and we think it's a, a very good plan they're calling for. And so none of these are fully designed yet. That would be part of the process, if rewarded these. We'll go through the, you know, the typical procurement process where we get a designer and create preliminary reports, and you'll have a chance to review those, so.
And I think further on the question, too, of like, if we don't get the grant funding, will these still happen? They would still be priority projects. We would still work to identify funding for them, but it would obviously delay the timing on projects.
Right, yeah. There, there's a couple of these that are kind of funded through other sources that we're kind of trying to, to improve, but some of these, yeah, we would continue to, to suggest in other categories.
Well, that, that's really exciting to hear. I think especially about the, to your point about the Reno and Meridian, because I know the Oklahoma City Indian Clinic had reached out to a number of us a few years back, expressing those concerns about, especially, you said, the bus route and then the, just the sort of danger of crossing. And as they said, a lot of their, the folks that are coming there for health services, employment, whatever it might be, is just not a very good situation for them. So I'm glad to hear that there's, there's been some movement to address some of that.
That's, that's a good project as well. And when the city council approved the $5 million of ARPA funds into the sidewalk category, one of the projects that the Planning Department intends to use that on is the crossings at Ann Arbor for that Indian clinic, so, yeah.
Just real quick to just elaborate a little bit more on the funding. So in the past, we, for the STBG projects, we've only relied on projects that were already funded through the bond or, and in recent years, the sales tax. But with the, with the $10 million of the council allocated, that gives us more flexibility to get more of these federal funds, as Councilwoman Cooper talked about, into our community. Because all we have to do in most cases is match, well, for the STBG, it's, it's an 80/20. So if we can just put forth 20%, we can get 80% of that tax money that our residents have already paid back into our infrastructure. So that, those additional funds give us even more flexibility. And of course, we'll continue to do the same thing as we go forward with additional bonds. But, you know, the scoring criteria that, that we're held to with these funds, if we are able to be a little more flexible, that, that is hugely beneficial. So that's why it's a little bit different this year than it has been in years past. We have more projects. What we do is we score the projects, and the highest scoring projects, regardless of funding source, we submit to ACOG.
And then just two more things. One, I want to thank you so much and our Planning Department and Embark, any other city staff who is doing their homework the way that you all are and going after these competitive grants, because they are competitive. And I'm just so proud of you all and the work you're doing. Your, your eyes are on that goal, and I just cannot thank you enough. And I just want to highlight that work you're doing for our residents. It's so critical, bringing our taxpayer dollars back home. Question, what about the education opportunities that exist here? Because, you know, a lot of people, I just keep hearing it from residents all the time, that people in cars seem very still confused about the bike infrastructure, the information about the car crashes, because this is about car safety also, people in cars and their safety, just as much in some ways that it is about pedestrian and cyclist safety. I know we have Watch for Me, for instance, through ACOG, but I just feel like a lot more is going to be necessary. Are we, are there grants for this? Are we making moves toward this? I think this needs to be some of the work.
Yeah, so, you know, we do have Watch for Me that the city helped create, and then now we partner with ACOG on it to help create like, oh, an awareness campaign for bicycle and pedestrian safety. We've also tried to attend more and more events with our Watch for Me materials, going to city council town halls, going out to the Rotary Club, recently put on a bike safety rodeo at Wheeler Park, and getting out there and trying to teach kids how to, how to do things more friendly. But the driver's side is harder. It's harder to, to get drivers more familiar with it. Some of it will be a bit gradual as they have more exposure, as they see more of these facilities going in, they, they encounter them more in their day-to-day, it's going to come a little bit more naturally. But we'll continue to partner with ACOG. ACOG is also very interested in pushing out maybe more TV ads, maybe more radio ads. Radio ads particularly effective with drivers. Because that's who still listens to the radio.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so trying, trying to partner, that's, that's been a good partnership for us, and so we'll try to continue to work with that. We've also gotten a little bit of interest from the Oklahoma City Community Health Foundation, or, and so trying, trying to work with that, that group a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say this before, before you leave, thank you as well, but as we look at a couple things, if we're able to put that money back into some of the, the projects we need, in my opinion, this is the core time for us to look at some of those things that have come online that we have not had in the past, that are now priorities for our residents, such as our sidewalks. And I say particularly the sidewalk that I've been trying to get forever with Wilshire from Kelly to 235. So when we think about those small little pieces, if we're able to use that funding to go back into other projects, that is a priority for us to look at, especially, again, if we're going to do these projects, resurface corners, add ADA compliant infrastructure to certain places with nowhere for them to go, what are we doing it for? You know, so if we're just going to have a light and a place for them to cross, and that's it, they're still in danger. So we need to build that type of infrastructure as far as our Bike Walk OKC is concerned. And one of the things that I was listening, as he asked that question, as far as educating folks, is there a possibility, and I don't know, because I don't do this work, but for us to extend that crosswalk, you know, the markings for the crosswalk, for making it wider for people to stop a little further back? Because I know me, I go right up to it, and I know I'm probably not supposed to do that. So is there a way for us to even look at those types of small pieces to, in how we look at what we're doing and futuristic plans for this infrastructure as well?
Yeah, we, we are always trying to look at, at new best practices. It's a, you know, a rapidly evolving field, and there's the National Association of City and County Transportation Officials. It's a great resource for us for kind of developing standards for new designs and work with our Public Works Department extensively, trying to, they've been, they've been gracious to let us pilot some, some new things Oklahoma City hasn't done before, and so we get some experience with it and see how it works, how to do it better. We, we didn't have anything, bike lanes, and we had very few sidewalks not that long ago. And so this has been a learning process for all of us as we're trying stuff, and we're, there'd be more exciting projects to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to item AL, Councilwoman Nice.
All right. I just wanted some clarification, because I'm noticing a decrease of these funds. You know, I know, especially as we're looking at this area in particular of the resurfacing, residential resurfacing project, and talking to quite a few of my residents, that I still have some streets that have not been completed. So I'm curious how we're going to work through that and how we're going to make sure this gets taken care of.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eric Ringer, Public Works Director. So this project is, is a project that has just been recently completed. It took about a year to complete. It started last fall, and the estimated construction at the time that it began was $3.5 million. So the general process for our 2017 bond projects, which this is, is that a contractor and city staff will, will work through the area and develop that estimate. But until they actually get into the construction, a lot of the things just simply aren't known until they start uncovering some of the damages or they actually start doing the work. So the reason for the decrease, and there was actually another decrease a little bit earlier in the project, was that simply the amount of repair work wasn't required. And so they overestimated, they did not need to use all the contingency funds for the project. And so as it's recommended to you today for, for closeout, as a part of the final acceptance, these are simply monies that are going to return back to the bond fund to be re-appropriated to new street projects.
Well, I know, as I've, I've expressed before, that I have a concern, because I had a resident reach out to me that's in this area that said their street did not get resurfaced. So I would like for us to look at that. And I'm, I'm actually nervous for us to continue to go through this amendment when, in fact, I don't have that confirmation that this street has been completed. So what I, I will ask that we do today is I would like to just defer this until I can just get clarification on this particular street. And if, if you know something I don't, please let me know. But other than that, I'm hoping that we can have a resolve by the next meeting to understand why that particular street was not repaved.
I just need to look into it and find out, and I'll be happy to get back with you.
Okay, thank you. So what I, I will ask is that we please defer 9AL for two weeks, as I, I do some research and work with Mr. Ringer to do the same research for this street.
All right. So the request is for a deferral. Let's bring that up as an option virtually. I have a motion and a second to defer item 9AL for two weeks. Pass your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item AM. Councilman Cooper?
Thank you. Just an update on this, because this is an increase of, you know, $100,000 to our street enhancement project that seems it's going to add some construction time, too. So I want to make sure the district and the ward are aware of what's, what's happening there, just beyond this memo. Thank you.
Absolutely. So this is our Northwest 39th Street Enhancement Project that was done as a part of our Better Streets, Safer City Sales Tax Program. The work has been substantially complete since earlier this summer. But the addition of the change order today, there was a request for some additional electrical conduit, there's actually a flag prototype that's going to be installed as a part of the amenities to the district, that's going to be a part of this change order if approved today. And there's also a new PED pole that has been desired to be placed at Northwest 39th and Pennsylvania Avenue that was not a part of the original work. So as we close out, these are really the final touches that are included in this $103,000, just to wrap up some of the final inspection items. And once complete, this project will also be ready for final acceptance.
When do we anticipate that final acceptance now?
I would anticipate. I would anticipate in just the next, a little bit on material delivery. So what's really difficult for me to estimate today is how long it'll take to get the PED pole parts, how quickly it'll take to install the prototype, flag, and some of the other amenities. I would like to see it done by the end of the calendar year, but it'll just depend on the delivery schedule.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll stay with you, Councilman Cooper, item AV.
Because we have these kind of historic street enhancement projects coming, talk to us a little bit more about what we've learned here about the need on 24th Street. I think this would be an Eric question, maybe. Right, AR, am I wrong?
V.
Oh, V. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, this one, yeah, I kind of had some bigger questions for that. Sorry, I skipped, I had AR noted here. But AV, if you kind of talk about this, because I know we have the Uptown streetscape that's happening just to the east, but then there's this project that's happening too. I'm wondering how those are going to work together and what residents should expect here. AV, AV and Victor.
And Victor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sorry. So we really, this is another example of what occurs after funding is approved when we reach out for grant programs. This is the actual project agreement where the city is going to reach forward then with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to actually do the improvements with the funds. This is work that's actually going to occur at Northwest 23rd and Western as a part of the intersection. It hasn't been fully designed and so again, it's going to be looking at pedestrian enhancements with ramps, signage, pavement markings, intersection and traffic signal improvements, things that will come out as we get that survey completed to make it more pedestrian-friendly and safe and then also address any of the traffic needs in the intersection as well.
I'm glad to hear you say it wasn't in design yet because I got worried that I had missed it, but because I had my eye on this intersection, I didn't think I had missed it. When do we anticipate maybe some preliminary designs?
So right now, the construction, we think we'll be able to start at sometime next summer. So the design between now and next summer is when we would expect to see those.
Okay.
Summer of '23.
Thank you.
Okay, items BB and BC, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, I just wanted, just to have someone explain kind of this process. I think being as transparent about these sorts of agreements as possible is always good practice. But I also just have, I guess, some questions about sort of updates about what work this advisory council has been doing and some of the outcomes that we have been seeing from them.
So you wanted specifically the, like, what actions we've had from-
Yeah, and I think specifically explaining like why we're going through this process of amending the agreement.
Oh, to amend the agreement.
Yes, as well as what are those things that-
Yeah. So Tim Tardibono is here. He's the director of the Criminal Justice Advisory Council. I'll let you know that these changes that we're talking about this, when it was several weeks ago that we actually approved these agreements, it's just Midwest City was pulling out. And so it's just to adjust the documents for Midwest City, not, no longer being in here. And so that's really all that's being changed today.
Yes, and that is, my understanding is that is because the charter of the advisory council says anytime an entity pulls out, that needs to be reaffirmed or amended-
Right.
-in the agreement for all the partner cities.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and then if we could, I think, you know, I think specifically, one of my concerns was there was an Oklahoman article a few weeks ago in which they quoted a study that was done about the disparities between Oklahoma County and Tulsa County as far as that procedural justice piece. Specifically, it says the report, the bipartisan advocacy group published, focused on criminal justice and immigration reform, found stark disparities in bond practices, case dismissals, and use of sentencing enhancement between the counties. And I guess I just, I want to know, how is this council addressing those procedural pieces? Because I think there's been so much talk about the jail as a facility and not as much on what the county courts can be doing to get people out of that facility as quickly as possible, especially knowing that they are innocent until they are not charged, you know, they're not sentenced to a crime, they're discharged. And specifically, I can think of one individual who's died in the jail this year who, to all accounts, should have been out on a hospital bond. He was, you know, very, very ill, sleeping on the floor of the jail because there was not a bed large enough for him. And my understanding is that is a choice of, that is a policy choice, that that person did not need to be in the jail, literally deteriorating in health and dying there instead of in a hospital, getting the proper care and hopefully surrounded by friends and family. So those are the sorts of concerns that I hear and I'm really frustrated that I'm not hearing people with a lot of, or entities with the, with the sort of prominence and power to talk about those issues as highly and prioritize them in talking about what we should be seeing policy-wise from the DA's race or from our county court system to mirror maybe some of the practices that the, our municipal judges at the city level have taken to make sure that we aren't holding people in that facility longer than we absolutely need to be. So I'm just kind of curious to hear some of that since we have this opportunity to renew the, or amend the agreement, I should say.
And in the lens of that, I'm sorry to interrupt, if you'll talk about why Midwest City pulled out, so at least our, this council has an understanding and knowledge if they did not have that before, please.
Yeah, thank you. Timothy Tardibono with the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Advisory Council, thanks for having me back. So I think Councilwoman Ward, Councilwoman Nice, if I can start with you, Councilwoman. I think it's probably inappropriate for me to comment on behalf of Midwest City and the council vote they took. I'll say it was a meeting that started at 6:00. I didn't get to present till about 9:30. They didn't vote till after 11:00 and it was a very difficult meeting to have a civil discourse conversation about what CJAC had done and why they should continue to be a community partner collaborating on countywide justice reform. I will say that the current police chief, Chief Porter, who's been very assertive with some of the mental health and the de-escalation efforts there in Midwest City, as well as former Police Chief Brandon Clabes, who had been the original member of the CJAC from Midwest City, and then Chief Porter was involved after he retired, both of them spoke in favor of CJAC staying. And so we felt like we had good support and was frankly a little surprised at how things turned in that meeting. It was a very difficult meeting. For Councilperson Hammond, that article brought up some important data. I'm always one that says we should be looking at data, good or bad, because it identifies problems and it should lead to solutions, not recoiling from that and trying to solve it. If you look at some of those things that came up in that article, longer, longer sentence recommendations from the district attorney's office, higher bail settings, also from the district attorney's office. You know, November 8th around the corner, we are confident that both district attorney candidates will want to look at that data and will want to make improvements. And so at, by virtue of them being elected, they will be on the CJAC and they have both committed to participating where currently that's not the case. So when you have the public defender, the presiding judge, and the district attorney all working together on our court subcommittee, things can go better and more positively. And right now, we only have two of those three members that are participating.
I appreciate that. I think, again, the, I've just been a little bit disappointed in, again, the prominence of some of the members of this council. You know, I feel like we're very aggressive in promoting building a new jail, but again, that setting the conversation, setting expectations about and helping educate the public on these public safety issues and how we can achieve reforms and hold those, whoever does get elected accountable to those things. Because I think to your point, yes, the current DA has not been participating, that seems like something that the public should be very aware of. And my guess is that most people are not aware of that. So, you know, ensuring that, again, this council that has a lot of very prominent people, both community members, you know, city leadership from around the county, you know, setting that conversation about what sort of policy things we should be expecting out of that office would be encouraging, I think, to see because so often it feels like the conversation is set by people who are reacting to-
New stories.
Yeah, news stories, but also just to, you know, lobbying interests. I mean, just to be very frank, bail, the bail industry is often who gets to set the conversation about these issues and use, pull news stories out that are scare tales, you know, scare stories that aren't representative of the actual data of who is being held in that jail and what it would look like for them to not be held there until trial, simply because they do not have the funds to, you know, get their ransom essentially. So that's where, you know, I think, and I would like to see, I guess, this council be a lot more vocal in that and in that conversation. And like you said, hopefully if we do have more of those offices participating, maybe that's the case. But, yeah, I think I just wanted to make sure that that's said publicly because so much of this conversation, I feel like, like I said, has focused on the building and not as much on really looking at and talking about prominently and setting the conversation about why are certain people being held in there that have just no business being there except that they cannot afford the ransom set by the district attorney's office.
There's actually a subcommittee that's focused on the procedural justice side. I don't know the right term for it, but that has several members that are representative from multiple different parts of the process of the county side.
And specifically to your question about the medical and the mental health ORs, there's a judge, that Judge Andrews has assigned, Judge Bondurant, on a working group related to specific procedure where they will be looking for people in custody that have medical or severe mental illness issues, working with law enforcement and then the medical provider. And now with our new, you know, there's a new set of ARPA beds that'll be coming for Griffin, Tulsa, and Veneta. Tulsa's already doing, Tulsa County is doing this because they have a grant with the DA's office and the DA member is looking at people in the jail that would be better served in an out-of-custody civil treatment setting, but you have to work on reducing those charges so that they can move out into a setting. We are optimistic that we will have in January a new administrative order related to that, that a new district attorney will be committed to helping with.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And when that happens, I can certainly send you-
I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. Do we have a representative that represents our city on this council? And if so, who is it?
So I sit on the board, Chief Gorley does, LaShawn Thompson, and Judge James.
Okay, thank you for that. And I think it's very important in the lens of what Councilwoman Hammond said, there's a few of us that get tagged in all of these posts when someone is killed in the jail system, unfortunately. And as we understand and hear, because there is not an educated word or language that is passed around or just sent out in general about city charges as far as how we OR in 10 hours, that needs to be stated continuously. And in my opinion, it can come from those members that sit on this council to help us to relay that message that these are things that are happening and as our municipal officers in our court is concerned, we are doing our job. And that is not said enough for us as those council members to be tagged as if we're not doing anything. And I would like, if possible, for us to figure out how to, how to create some type of educational pipeline for people to understand that, what those charges are specifically. If you are arrested in our system, in our city, and what those A and B offenses are and the numbers each month. I know we ask for them, we get them on a judiciary committee, but those need to be publicly stated in order for our city to relay the message of what we need to say to those residents and those who continuously say we could be the problem as far as what we're not doing in relation to policy when in fact, we're doing a lot better than most when we think about certain policies that are in place right now. So that's just my conversation about that.
And Councilwoman, we've appreciated the way you all have continued to extend some of those policies. Every time that Ms. Thompson and Judge James extend that warrant waiver and the fee waivers, we usually publicize it through our media, our social media. And so we do try to highlight when our cities, Edmund and Oklahoma City now are doing important things. Edmund just opened a new youth behavioral health center. We talked about that. We try to highlight those things because it is important to the larger conversation of system reform to understand what improvements are being made across our community and, but we'll make a bet. That municipal state charges is a difficult one for people to understand and I'll, we'll work on how do we make that better.
Thanks, Tim.
I just, I'm so happy you said this, Councilwoman, and thank you, Tim. At some point soon, and I'm looking at Chief and Tim and City Manager, at some point soon, I'd like for that process to start and I'd like to learn like how often we can maybe as a council receive these updates. And in those updates, I think we must never take for granted, I had to learn this the hard way, that just because you say it once in one public setting, right?
Right.
Doesn't mean that everyone heard it.
That's right.
Or doesn't mean that even the people who are in attendance heard it that first time. So I would like for, I say as a teacher also and as a student, I just, I'd like to see these as regular updates in terms of what is the city of OKC doing with its municipal courts, police, working with CJAC to address these things. I think they need to be regular. We just can't take that for granted.
Yeah, and I think we can look at it from the CJAC perspective too, but also with our law enforcement policy task force recommendations and all, and the work that Andre is doing with getting the platform set up and the website set up. I think that's going to be another tool. So working together, I think, on that, that we will have the tools out there to help already have better communication in place.
I think it's great because we, to Councilwoman Nice's point, we are doing better than most. And it is truly wild, you all, wild, when people on social media will tag me, Nikki, and Joe Beth and say, "You all as a city aren't doing anything about mental health or criminal justice reform." And I'm like, "Oh, my Lord, did Maps4 not happen? Did the Law Enforcement Task Force not happen? Did the Human Rights Commission not happen? Did the Community Policing Resolution not happen?" And so we've got to make sure, to your point, City Manager, that we're like sharing that and we can't take at all for granted that people know it. And let me tell you something else, two more things. One, too often, and I'm sure you all know this, too often when people come downtown, I've been stopped by a resident coming into this building, the municipal building, City Hall, thinking it's the court.
Right.
And they, so many of our people, because we're lacking in civic education, cannot stress this enough, educating our people on what city government and county government are, many people, their first encounter with this building is not to come seek city services, but they have misunderstood which building this is in comparison to the county courthouse. And if they're misunderstanding it in their arrival, they are misunderstanding it in terms of who's charging them with what and what each level of government is doing to address mental health, et cetera. I'm just, I just want to make it that clear. That's what's happening. It's that level of confusion. If I'm wrong, please correct me, but that's what's happening. One final thing. So the people who tag us are off- what's happening. One final thing. So, the people who tag us are often tagging us, demanding more mental health, criminal justice reform. What would you say, Tim, and just, I don't, we've not spoken about, I don't know what you're going to say here. What would you say to people who, maybe on the other side of the conversation, who are concerned about, really concerned about crime in their neighborhoods, the fact that Oklahoma as a state, we learned in our governor's debate, is in fact higher in crime than many of the places that people will point to, like California? What would you say, because I could imagine people would be critical of the approach you all are taking in prioritizing mental health and these sorts of things. What's your response? And I, you've been in this work, so I'm just curious.
On the mental health piece specifically?
Why, if someone were to say to you that we're, that you all are not, and the city is not addressing crime responsibly to keep our neighborhood safe, what say you in this work?
So, I'd, I'd approach it in two ways. First of all, on the mental health piece, you know, part of, part of what my job is, is to look at trends and to see where things are going. And although I am a glass half-full person, I'm not Pollyanna, and I'm a lawyer, and so I look for evidence. And so, the pieces of evidence that are out there that are showing that we are recognizing problems, running to problems and addressing them continues to grow on the mental health front. And it's important that you look at what the role is of each of the, the agencies and the governments. So, the state government has recently, through the ARPA funds and the legislative funds, rolled out over 200 bed new, they're in the process. They've got ARPA approval and state legislative. So, the money is there and it's moving forward for more than 200 new mental health beds. That includes a new Griffin that we keep hearing is going to be closer to Oklahoma City than it is to Norman. Tulsa Behavioral Health Center is getting more beds, and Vanita, the, the mental health competency is getting more beds. So, for a county like Oklahoma County, for our jail, that's going to help relieve pressure on some of those people that are severely mentally ill, that should not be in the jail and unfortunately dying in the jail, but should be in a better outpatient, either civil commitment in a civil bed or in an outpatient court ordered treatment program, where if they don't do successfully, then they will have to consider going back to criminal charges. But we should be trying to give that community-based care first before the incarceration piece. Those things are in the works to be developed. Then, on the other spectrum, what you all have done with your MAPS investment is you have two new mental health crisis centers on the way. You have the restoration center on the way. You've put money into the diversion hub to expand the services there, and then the homeless, the transitional housing and the things that are happening. You all have taken your sales tax, and the voters have approved that notion to address that problem at the state, at the city level. And so, all those pieces are going to give us more tools in the tool belt, if you will, to further divert people out of crisis in the jail and into these mental health centers. We also have statewide the 988 mental health hotline that I'm already hearing from people in communities that they are using that and not calling the police. I have a pastor in Midwest City, of all places, who has used that multiple times just in the last month, and he, he called to tell me to tell Commissioner Hodges how much they appreciate that that's out there because it's avoided them having to call the police. So, those pieces are all in the right place. And then with our new jail, we will have a dedicated medical and mental health wing, which we don't have right now. There are certain things that they're not going to get rid of those criminal charges, and so you have to take care of those people appropriately, constitutionally, and humanely in that facility. And right now, we just physically do not have the opportunity to provide medical or mental health care to the level that is, is frankly humane and required. And so, each of those pieces, each in their own lane, the county making sure that wing gets built appropriately, the state providing more mental health beds, the city taking up the effort with the urgent recovery centers and the crisis centers, and what we've done on the, on the 21 CP, on the police reform task force, the focus that, you know, I appreciate Chief Gorley and his deputy chiefs, that we were walking into that law enforcement policy task force with already a desire to continue to improve, continue to deescalate, continue to provide services. And so, each of the governments right now, as much as people like to criticize government, are at least moving towards this mental health problem is a crisis, and we all need to do each part jurisdictionally to solve that problem. On the, on the other general crime issue, you know, I'm, I was just speaking at an interim study yesterday about State Question 781 funding, that the funding did not follow the changes, and so counties are having to deal with the changes without the funding that the state promised. And we, I'm, you know, I've got the data to show it in our annual report that I'm happy to make available to you all, that, that shows as we've reduced the jail population, because we've been growing diversion programs and alternative sentencing programs like what's happening at the diversion hub with over 600 people on their caseload, the majority of those people would be in jail if it weren't for the diversion hub. Drug court, over 400 participants. Most of those people would be in prison if it weren't for drug court. What happens when you get to know these people that are in the programs is that you realize, you know, treatment, recovery, it's not rocket science, it's not brain surgery, but it's really hard work. And if you don't have the case managers and the staff that help those people through recovery, it's not going to work. And so, Judge Stoner yesterday, the head of our drug court, he has two supervisors, he thinks he really needs eight, and he's going to the state and saying, our drug court could do more and could be better if we had more case managers to do that. When you get to know the people in drug court and community sentencing at the diversion hub, you recognize that as they graduate, remerge, another great program, Just for Mothers, when these women graduate, remerge, you want these women in your neighborhood. You want these guys working at your shop because they have beat their illness, their addiction, and now they're committed to getting it right, to showing people, showing an employer that they were worth a chance. And so, the key, and my long answer is, public safety is going to be enhanced when we put people in these programs out of jail and, and help them break the cycles of mental illness, addiction, and substance abuse. And we've got to do more of that in Oklahoma County, and we've got to do more of that statewide. And we made the case to the state legislature yesterday. As we've seen the reduction in jail population, we've also seen the reduction in the number of people going to the Department of Corrections from Oklahoma County has dropped for the fifth year in a row on a steady stair step down to levels that we think show that we're preventing people from going to prison as we put more people into drug court diversion hub, remerge, those kind of programs. So, you all, I think, are on the right track by using your MAPS 4 funding to address that, and we need more of that countywide and statewide.
Hey, James, to address your question as far as what's going on at the city level, and, and wanting to get more of that information, LaShawn does a great job in providing information to the judiciary committee, and so you may want to ask her to put you on the email list, but I can tell you, I just got this from LaShawn, under the penalty reduction program, we've closed 6,688 cases. We've dismissed fewer appear cases in the number of 2,315. And as a result of the program, we've collected $1,055,883. As far as the judiciary committee dating back to 2015, LaShawn provides me with this information too. In, in fiscal year 2015, the jail agreement was approved by the city for $2,614,000 and some change. Today, in fiscal year, fiscal year '22, the jail agreement is down to $559,000. And so, that's information that LaShawn's doing a great job at providing to us. And if you'd like that, we'd be more than happy to get it to you.
I think that's great. I, I love, the, the numbers are great. I'm glad she provides that update. I guess what I'm now asking for is for that update to occur at this body as well, because I think more people are going to tune in to that. Whereas, there's got to be a way to educate people. I don't know if it's at this body, whatever. You see, shaking heads of maybe not, but.
Well, no, I, I think that's, that's right, because as you said earlier, people don't realize Oklahoma City compared to county. And because the jail sits barely two blocks up, people think everyone comes from Oklahoma City to go to that detention center, when in fact, that is not always the case. So, there has to be some type of expectation and education in how our city lets the community and residents know where we are. And yes, Ms. LaShawn is wonderfully amazing at what she does. Now, it's up for, up to us in this platform to make sure we spread that message to the rest of our city.
Yeah. And we'll, and we'll work on different ways that we can try to help get information out and do it really effectively.
And to your point on the, on the, part of why the jail reduction has happened is because Oklahoma City has changed how they're doing the municipal, where when Vera came here in 2015 and '16, you had over 150 people that were only on municipal charges in the jail. That number's been under 10 now for quite some time on a regular basis.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Item BK. This has a scheduled presentation.
Yes. So, Jason Cotton is going to make a presentation. Jason's with ADG. He's going to make a presentation on the MAPS 4 program. When we came back and amended our revenues and amended the projections for the MAPS program, council set forward the budget and set forward a resolution that gave direction to the MAPS 4 advisory board. MAPS 4 advisory board that went back, or the, the MAPS team went back, worked with the subcommittees and advisory board to do proportional allocations of these funds. And so, Jason's just going to give us introduction, what's been brought back to, or presentation of what's been brought back to the subcommittees and then to the advisory board to recommend to council as further allocation into the subprojects of that additional funding.
Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, Mayor, council members. Thank you for your time this morning. So, David Todd is out sick today, so I am flying solo here today. So, I know that hopefully this will go well, and when he gets back in the office this week, we'll have good news for him in terms of getting this accomplished today. So, I think as the city manager indicated, this is, I think, in our mind, really the next step in some, in action that council took in mid-August of this, this summer. If you'll recall, from mid-August, we, I'm going to go to the next slide here, there was a presentation given to council, an amended revenue projection from Oklahoma City Finance. You know, the original MAPS 4 program, $978 million was the original revenue projection. Oklahoma City Finance came forward and said, we have a new revenue projection. We think we're going to exceed the original program budget by about $100 million, or the original revenue projections. And so, the resolution that they brought forward to council at that time really just communicated a way to equitably divide that $100 million across all 16 projects in the MAPS 4 program. And so, really, the, you know, the city manager gave a really good context in terms of framing this conversation. But what, I think it's helpful to return to that resolution, just to remind everybody how those dollars were divided. There was a, a conversation at that time about allocating these dollars based on the individual capital budgets within each of the 16 projects. And so, we have a slide here that really does all of the mechanics of the math that was presented in that resolution. I think it's a, one thing I want to be really clear about is the information that we're presenting here this morning, this is all information that council took action on in mid-August. It's really just showing the mechanics of the mathematics behind how the dollars were allocated across the 16 projects. And so, you can see there, one of the columns, it talks about prior capital budget. And so, you simply take that number, divide it by the total program capital budget, and it gives you the percentage that was allocated to each one of the projects. There were four small exceptions, and I'm just going to mention them here briefly. These were also included in the August 16 resolution. So, there was a conversation about how dollars would be allocated within the Family Justice Center budget, to what specific use those dollars would be put. There was a conversation about dollars shifting from Paycom Arena to the Coliseum Project. And then lastly, the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center was mentioned specifically. The operator there had an idea of how they wanted to take these amended, these additional budget dollars and divide them between capital needs and operation and maintenance needs. And so, the, all of the information that you see here on the slide, on the right, on the right side of the slide, was included in that August 16 council resolution. So, this is really a point of departure for the work that we've been doing over the last couple of months. And so, it's a little bit confusing, but I, I want to try to, I guess, bring some clarity to the work that we've been doing. And so, the August 16 council resolution, so what you see in front of you on this slide, and the intent is not for you to read every line on this, but this is a list of really not only the 16 MAPS projects, but all of the different subprojects and phases that are beneath each one of those 16 projects. And so, the August 16 council resolution, obviously, it identified the budget adjustments to each of the 16 projects. There is actually a handful of subprojects that were also set by that council resolution. And so, an example of this might be the Clara Luper Civil Rights Center, which I've already mentioned. There were two subprojects underneath that project, one being an operation and maintenance fund, and one being the construction of the facility. And so, because the resolution identified the dollars that were to be allocated to each one of those phases of work, from our perspective, the, the resolution really clarified for us exactly what those budgets were to be. And so, really what we've been focusing on over the last couple of months is really what is left. And so, if you were to take that list of projects, pull all of those ones that were highlighted in blue off the table, those were set by the council resolution and are not something that we would deviate from. And so, really, the, the projects that you see highlighted here in yellow are what we've been working on. We brought forward a, a recommendation to the subcommittees and to the citizens advisory board last month regarding how we would equitably divide this $100 million that had already been allocated by council to each one of the projects down into the different subprojects inside of each one. And so, really, what we recommended to the citizens advisory board was following council's lead in terms of allocating dollars based on the capital budgets of each one of the projects. And so, in reality, what we did is we used the same methodology that council did to take the dollars and divide them into the various projects. And so, we worked through that, provided a recommendation to, to the board. The guiding principle two and three that you see on this list, this is really, I think, speaking more to exactly how the dollars would be divided inside of the subprojects. So, just as a point of clarification, we're not talking about taking projects from, you know, $140 million Parks Project and putting it over in multipurpose stadium or anything like that. We're really working down inside of each one of these 16 projects. And so, we, there are a handful of those that were inflation adjusted. The youth centers is always the best example. We inflation adjusted those just to maintain equity between the four youth centers. And so, as we looked at how to take this $100 million and apply it to each one of those youth centers, we use those inflation adjusted values. So, so really, that's really it. It's a really brief presentation. There is a large table in the staff memo that is accompanying this agenda item. It has all of the information you could ever want on any one of these projects in terms of how these dollars were applied, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Have these, thank you for your presentation. Have these numbers, have we adjusted them on the website yet? Because I know last week, they weren't adjusted. I know the, the larger numbers were, but within the sub.
We haven't adjusted anything on there because it, we hadn't approved.
Until this moment.
The advisory board had approved it. We just brought it back so the council would see. It was all carried out the way it was directed and went down into the projects with the same spirit with which we did the initial allocations.
And I think the next step would be, you know, assuming council approves this and we can move forward, we would revise the implementation plan and distribute it. That's essentially what would happen.
And of course, the website stuff too, because it's, yeah, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jason.
Okay. Item BL. Councilman Carter.
Yes. This is just a program we've actually been working on for about a year. So, I kind of wanted a little bit of an update and say thank you so much for all your hard work in getting it kind of put here today for, for us to approve this.
No problem. Thank you.
Is it? Can you give us a little bit of an update on it?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just wanted.
Sure.
So, you're very welcome. Yeah. So, we've been working with this organization, Oklahoma City Gray's Youth Rugby Club, on some rugby fields for their programming. Through multiple different park locations, we kind of landed on Overholser Park, which is, this area in particular is just south of the reservoir, south of Overholser Drive. And this area historically had been used for soccer in the past, and has kind of become latent. And they brought the possibility to us about this site specifically for their use. They share, the overall acreage is, one portion of is also shared with a cricket club. So, we have a cricket group on one side and rugby on the other side. It's, we're really excited about the new partnership we've established with them. They have about 10 and a half acres for their rugby group. About three rugby fields total will be constructed by them. So, we really expect in this first year, we're working with them on kind of maintenance plan to help with, we have some gopher issues, and we we have some gopher issues and we've got some stickers and those kinda things that aren't very comfortable to play rugby on. So we're helping them mitigate some of those issues this first year.
Wow, I know we've been trying to get something going and kind of expanding how the different sports are.
Yes.
You know, things that we're bringing to the city. And the last time I heard, we were only gonna be able to do two fields. So the fact that we're doing three is even better.
Squeeze in three, we're pretty sure we can.
That's awesome, thank you so much for all you're doing.
You're welcome, no problem, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Well, that concludes our discussions on the consent docket. We could take a motion now for all items except for the one previously approved. The motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, concurrence docket, item 10. We have items A through J, we could take a motion. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11, items requiring separate votes. Item 11A is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2520 North Oklahoma Avenue going from C3 to I2. And Councilwoman Nice, the applicant is signed up only if there are questions. Larry BD.
Okay, thank you.
Couldn't find it. All right, I don't have any questions. This is a compatible use to the north and the south of their requests. So I will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 805 Northwest 68th going from SPOD 1324 to R1. And Councilman Cooper, no one has signed up to speak.
Yes, but is any representation here for the applicant? Wow, that's too bad. Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm curious and hopeful about this. It's right next to the OKC Ballet and an area that's gonna see some street enhancements that will ultimately connect to those KD Trail and Deep Work enhancements. So I'm pretty excited about that. So I would move for approval. Will move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11C is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2312 South Pennsylvania going from R2 to C3. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, this was recommended for approval by staff and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, so I will move for approval.
Motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11D is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 4316 South Youngs Boulevard going from R1 to R1ZL. Councilwoman Hammond, the applicant of Hammer Construction, has signed up probably just for questions.
Yeah, I, I know, I don't have any questions, but I, because it does appear, this is infill, which we love to see it. And recommended for approval by both staff and the Planning Commission, so I will move for approval as well.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item E was previously deferred, which brings us to 11F, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 4501 South Sayer Road going from AA to PUD 1904. And I know Councilwoman Young has stepped out. Did she mention?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Anyone signed up to speak?
Uh, they have not.
Okay, she was in agreement with it. And, you know, subject to the, the summary of technical evaluation, she moves for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11G is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 14744 North Council Road going from PUD 717 to PUD 1907. Councilman Stone Cypher, no one has signed up.
Thank you. This, this ordinance is for rezoning. It was approved by the Planning Commission on August 25, 2022. Subject to technical evaluations, there are no protests. I'd move for approval at this time, please.
All right, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 11H is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 8,000 South Air Depot Boulevard going from R1, AE1, AE2 to PUD 1909, AE1 and AE2. Councilman Stone, Randall Ward has signed up to speak. It's not clear what his position is.
Okay, Mr. Ward, you wanna come on down and... Could you state your name and address?
Randall Ward, 12624 Steve Drive. I kinda regret saying I'd come back and speak about this because it's really nice outside, but I have concerns. I understand, this is clearly like an economic development thing. I understand the sheer size of this project. The, I, I don't know if there's any efficiency that goes into something when you take 90, almost 100 acres and say you're just gonna cover it. It's kinda hard to see from, when you look at the blueprints and stuff. It doesn't seem that big because it's shrunk down. But if you're talking about 100 parking places, I think the, the warehouse was almost a million square feet, something like that. I mean, it's, it's just huge. And for many years, I worked environmental complaints. And we, we would send out a letter when people, when, when we exhausted all remedies, we'd send out a letter and say, "We do not regulate the sights, sounds, and appearance of industrial facilities." And this thing is, is gonna be tucked away, so it's not gonna be visible, I don't think. But I do think it's, it's gonna smell. And when you go by on that trail that's just to the north of it, you're gonna smell it, semi-smell bad. Traffic smells bad, and it's gonna be loud. I mean, I don't know, hopefully, there will be like some anti-idling could be put into the agreements that would cut down on the pollution and also just trucks sitting there idling because that's what trucks do. Like I, my main concern too is just in general, these big developments. I went back and counted, so far the last two years, you've approved converting, well, with this, it'd be essentially 4,000 acres to development of different kinds, intense developments in, in the rural areas. That doesn't look good to me in the future. I'm concerned about this project mainly for the future. It, it's a great location for what it is, don't get me wrong. I, I, it's, it's tucked away off the side of the interstate. They're very lucky to get this place.
30 seconds, please.
How much?
30 seconds.
Okay, well, I'll go quickly. Okay, I'm concerned in the future, is this gonna lead to more? Is this gonna lead, I mean, they've got water, they've got sewage, and that just leads to more development. The area to the east was already approved at one time for development, although hopefully, that'll never come to pass. And then to the south is the big reservation of, it's supposed to be kept safe, but we know what's gonna happen if it keeps developing. That's in danger, so. Anyway, not opposed, just concerned about the future of all this rural development in Oklahoma City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and I appreciate, I do honestly, I appreciate you coming back down again and, and sharing your thoughts. I have a lot of those same concerns, not necessarily on this project, but I know on a lot of others, I certainly do. So thank you very much for that. What this project is, is actually, it's a commercial facility. Potentially, it'll house about 600 good-paying jobs. It's gonna be supportive of Tinker Air Force Base, which is, again, our biggest single-site employer in the state. And it adds to that. And honestly, the location for it is, is interesting right there on South Air Depot. It's in direct relation to literally driving a half mile north and being able to pull into the truck exit, truck entrance for Tinker Air Force Base. On the other side of 240, you have the old GM plant, which now houses more employees than it ever did as a GM facility. So it was recommended by approval, for approval by staff as well as the Planning Commission. Therefore, I'm gonna go ahead unless anyone has any other questions. I'll go ahead and move for its approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11I is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 13501 North County Line Road going from PUD 1394 to PUD 1910. Councilman Carter, no one has signed up to speak.
I've shown no protests and Planning Commission is recommended for approval, so in agreement with the summary of the technical evaluation I do too.
All right, we have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. 11J is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 929 Southwest 88th going from C3 to SPOD 1441. Councilman Greenwell, no one has signed up to speak.
Thank you. This is a combined duplex, triplex development. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. There are no protests. We've not received any since that time. So I would approve, I would recommend approval for this. Move for approval.
We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, item K is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 4201 Northwest 50th going from O2 to SPOD 1443. Councilman Cooper, Lydia Hedrick has signed up. Not clear what her position is.
Well, let's find out together, Mayor. Please.
Okay, my name and address?
Please, thank you.
Okay, Lydia Hedrick. My husband and I are the property owners at 4129 Northwest 51st Street. It's right on the corner. Google Maps says it's 400 feet from the subject property. And I'm just concerned going from a single-family home to 12 units that are planned to go in. The density increases a lot. I am aware that affordable housing, or just more housing, is needed. So I don't wanna take away opportunities, but that's just a huge increase. There are quite a few duplexes right there along 50th and then right to the north of that lot, four more duplexes or four doors. And so my concern is just going from one house to 12, even though that house does need to be torn down because it has not been occupied for a while. And in talking to some of my neighbors in person, on the phone, and online, some of the concerns are how long the construction will take. Will the homes and the traffic on Northwest 50th be affected by that? Will it be rental properties? What will the rates on that be? Because I do know the duplexes just to the north there are two bedrooms and they rent for, the, the owners are asking 1,200 a month in rent. And so I'm just curious if it would be in line with that cost for the occupants. Will it be Section 8? Will it be 55-plus? What kind of occupants will we get? Or will they be sold individually and owner-occupied? Also concerned about how it will affect the current infrastructure. Will they be upgrading the power, water, and sewage?
Well...
Those are my questions and concerns.
Ask and ye shall. I believe, thank you for laughing at that. I have really good dad jokes. Mr. Box, would you mind addressing them? And do you need to hear them again, kinda one by one? Or how would you like to address them? Because there were several questions there.
I'm sorry.
How would you like to address those questions? Because there were several.
Yeah, I, I can address all, no problem. David Box, 522 Call Accord Drive. Perhaps I'd just start briefly with, at the, at the Planning Commission stage, you'll see that the eastern street is North Brunson Street. And right now, the site takes access from that and it's, it's in poor shape, at least the eastern side of this site. And so Janice Powers, the Ward 2 Planning Commission member, was very adamant that our site take access from 50th rather than Brunson. And the site plan will reflect parking stalls, there you go, along Brunson. So you'll notice that on the front of your staff report, TE number four is that property along Brunson shall be landscaped and curbed and not have parking. So the site plan will be revised. So what we'll now have along Brunson will be grass, trees, and landscaping to provide kind of a softer entrance into the neighborhood so that our development will take access from 50th and kinda swap out what is now a crumbling curb with new curbs, landscaping, to really separate this development from the existing single-family and duplexes to the north. So we agreed to do that pursuant to Ms. Powers' request. In terms of upgrades to the power, water, and sewage, yes. So we will have to, of course, adhere to all municipal ordinance as it relates to all of those things. We'll be coordinating with OG&E to ensure that our, our power supply is compliant with all code provisions. At the time of development, we'll have to submit building permit plans that will get reviewed as it relates to connections for water and sewer. And if there are upgrades required, then we will, we will do so. So this is not going to be Section 8. It will not be 55 and older, but perhaps those folks will choose to live there. And my client is exploring affordable housing options for this project. So it is a 12-unit apartment project. We think that it will provide diversity in housing that is, is asked for under the comp plan. If you look at the staff report, what the staff report tells us is that the proposal is consistent with the urban low Luda density ranges and the comprehensive plan goals to provide a mixture of residential housing types. So ultimately, that is why planning staff recommended approval, Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously, again, with these modified TEs that were requested by Janice Powers.
Would you remind me your name again?
Oh, Lydia Hedrick.
Lydia, did he respond to your, your inquiries? Do you have any remaining questions for Mr. Box while he's here? Any concerns?
Oh, I guess the construction loan can answer.
Yes.
In terms of the time of construction, I, I don't know. I'm sorry, I can't answer that question. I mean, I know if, if they get approval, their, their goal is to move as, as quickly as possible. Any construction project right now is having problems with supply issues. So whether it be windows or lumber or whatever, based upon the way that interest works on a construction loan, their goal is to move as quickly as possible.
Lydia, how's that, how's all that sounding? Any other questions or concerns for us? Okay, well, let me tell you. I, what I do like about it, to your point, Lydia, it does help address our, and you heard earlier, the housing needs, right? The undeniable. I appreciate Mr. Box's work with our Planning Commissioner, Janice Powers, to address walkability around there and aesthetics. I think that buffer, that transition is very important, right? That's where it tends to be the most accessible, so I like that. I like the way these buildings are facing one another because that fosters, better fosters, as we know, through planning, design, research, a better sense of community. When porches are staring at each other, when doors are staring at each other, that allows people to talk with one another. And so I, I appreciate that design. And, you know, it's just such an important area with its access to Coronado Schools, its access to Putnam City Schools, the delicious right around the corner Casa Perico. So you know what I'm talking about. That's a, that is an institution. So anyway, I, I see why someone would wanna live here and I see why you all would wanna, you know, preserve the, the character and these sorts of things. So, but with that, I would... But with that, I would move for approval. Will move for approval.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. Item L was previously deferred. Item M was previously struck. Item N was previously struck, which brings us to item O. This is, relates to the creation of a, what did we call it?
It's an oversight.
Board of Deferred Compensation Program.
Right. And I talked about amendments that we'd like to make to add two additional members to this last week. Before, we'd had that we would have one member from one of the bargaining units. We've added two members, so that we can now have one member from each of the bargaining units, with recommendations coming from their presidents, and then one from nonrepresented. And so it just adds a couple of additional members, and that's the only change. So we'll need to approve the amendment first, and then approve the ordinance.
Okay. So of course, as you recall, everyone recalls, we had a presentation on this, and a public hearing, and then today, this potential final passage. But first, we would need to handle this proposed amendment found at O1. Does the council wish to move that forward? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes to adopt the amendment. Passes unanimously. Now we're at O2. This is the ordinance as amended on final hearing. Does the council wish to move its adoption? We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item P, 1 and 2, was previously struck, which brings us to item Q. This is an ordinance to be introduced, set for public hearing on November 8, and final hearing on November 22, relating to personnel and retirement systems, et cetera.
Regina Story, our, the executive director for the retirement system, will give us a presentation real quick, or explain what changes we have, are proposed in the ordinance today.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Regina Story from the ERS. Retirees in the employee retirement system are eligible for a cost of living adjustment. It's set by municipal code at a maximum of 2%. The Plan Design Committee of the ERS Board met in August and discussed options to assist retirees during this time of historic inflation. The ordinance before you today, being introduced, would allow for an additional amount to be granted to those retirees who are eligible for cost of living increases. And any future stipend considered by the board would take into consideration the overall plan funding level. It would require an analysis by the actuaries before the board considered it. It would allow for stipends to be considered at the same meeting as the cost of living adjustments, so that's why you're hearing from it now. If it's adopted by the end of November, it would take effect by the end of the year, so it would fall in line when we normally review that cost of living adjustment in January. So.
And it doesn't change the fact, I mean, this doesn't make a decision on what would be provided. The board still makes that decision. That's their responsibility. If they're allowed to be able to do one as a stipend, they can also evaluate, because the long-term effect of a higher increase is significant. But being able to do a stipend allows them to evaluate just that financial impact, and make sure they can fund that, and they could evaluate that consideration a year at a time. And so it just gives them more flexibility in what they're trying, the consideration they're trying to give for retirees.
Yes. But if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
Okay. So today's action would be to introduce the ordinance for consideration, if the council wishes to do that. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. That's going to have a public hearing on November 8, and a potential final hearing on the 22nd of November. That brings us now to item R, a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
I would like to look at item C again, and this, unfortunately, as we're working through this property and the situation for Dr. Phillips, he called me within the last couple of weeks because his property had been vandalized. So I'm trying to figure out the best ways, and I know we've been talking about lighting and what can be done to assist with this property. And I'm at my wits' end trying to figure out what to do, because I know there's something that we can do to help protect this vested interest in some ways. So I'm going to ask that we defer again for a month as I work with him, because as, if you have not seen this property, it's quite unfortunate that someone thinks it's okay to rip off the locks and enter into a property that does not belong to them, which causes other hazards and concerns and money for the property owner. And that is due to the lack of security and lighting in said area. So I'm going to continue to work with him to see what we can do. In the meantime, I'm just going to ask for that grace of working with him in this process. So that's my ask, to defer that a couple, at least for another month.
Okay. Did you say a month?
Yes.
So that would be November 22, it would appear.
That's fine. Thank you.
Is this property under any kind of, like, local or state historical area, or anything along those lines?
We'd like to do that. It's also a cost to do that as well, to declare it a historic property because of the historic reference of the Bryant Center, of what it was and what it remains to be, in the hope that Dr. Phillips would like to use this space to revitalize it for the community use as it was before. But in the meantime, it's trying to get it back into compliance, and unfortunately, we still have the same issues when it comes to people taking ownership of property that's not theirs. So that's a difficulty that we're working with, and that's the unfortunate part, and wanting to figure out how we can maybe get some, I don't know how to assist him with that, but as far as our city is concerned, what can we do to help him when we know there are issues with others invading and taking, and coming onto his property and trespassing?
I'm just getting concerned personally. We're deferring this almost a year at this point. We're setting the precedence for something that has no bearing, unfortunately. We don't have an issue as a city protecting this when it's an individual landowner. They've got the responsibility of doing that, correct?
Yes. However, in that same lens, this is, I'm not sure if you've ever been to this area of our community, but there is a concern as far as where this is located, in the lighting aspect and security aspect, that we can do better as far as how we assist said property owner in ensuring that we address his concerns, because he's been open about what has taken place, he's been open about the things he's done, he's been open about even the concerns of how we can help in said property, of helping him to work through how he uses that money and comes through with that plan. So I have asked just for another month for us to do this, as I work with him, and we can hopefully get it where it needs to be. But I want us to also keep in mind, even as a historic property, if we put it on the historic register, while he would like to save this said property as well, I know there are still consequences that come with that. So those are also things that I'm talking through and working through with he and his family, to see what that best interest is.
Okay, so the request is to defer item R1C for until November 22. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're back on the remainder of the dilapidated structures docket found at R1. No one had signed up to speak, so we've closed the public hearing, and we can look now at the resolution found at R2, declaring that the structures are dilapidated, except for that previously deferred. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11S1 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
They have not, and so we will close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution found at S2, declaring that the structures are unsecured. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11T1 is a public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those previously struck. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
They have not.
Since they have not, we will close the public hearing and proceed to item T2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right. Item 11U is a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a general and a runoff election in the city of Oklahoma City for the purpose of electing council members from Wards 2, 5, 6, and 8, setting the date of the general election as February 14, 2023, and the date of the runoff election, if needed, as April 4, 2023, and then directing other actions as necessary and appropriate to that. But I would note the filing period is December 5, 6, and 7 of this year. No real discussion on that unless anyone wants some. It's pretty self-explanatory, and we can adopt the resolution. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11V is a resolution declaring the service firearm issued to Oklahoma City Police Department Sergeant Megan Burke surplus property, authorizing the chief of police to transfer the service firearm, a Glock 17, in memory and honor of Sergeant Megan Burke, to her surviving father, Patrick Burke. Again, a relatively self-explanatory and regrettable item that we can take up if the council desires, which they do. We have a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. All right. We are now at items WX and Y, and I believe they're all kind of related to each other. W is an approval of the amended and restated Emergency Medical Services Interlocal Cooperation Agreement. Item X is approval of the second amended and restated trust indenture. Believe that item will require an amendment as well. And then item Y is an ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing and adopted with an emergency on November 8. We have a presentation.
Yes, yes. So Jason Fairbrush, Assistant City Manager, is going to present these items. You all know that we've been working on this with IMSA staff and city of Tulsa for several months now. I'm going to tell you that upfront, we've got a couple of amendments that we're going to ask for on the floor here, and Jason will describe that. I pressed hard to try to get these documents in. We've got some deadlines that we're coming up against, and pressed hard for this. And so last-minute staff was all working together to get this done. There's a couple of items that we just needed to adjust, and so Jason will explain that. But I just want to express my appreciation to Wiley Williams as the chairman of the IMSA Trust, John Easley, executive director, and then all of our staff, Chief and Paula Kelly, for working on this. Everyone came together. It was a challenging discussion to try to work through making a few changes here, and Jason's going to describe the changes. We've talked with you about, really, the principles that we're trying to accomplish here. But at the end of the day, ultimately, the idea of, you know, IMSA is serving our residents, and it's us working in partnership together to serve our residents the best that we can. I appreciate all the effort that they've put forward in the difficult times that we're in right now, to work with us in this, but also to serve our residents, and working with creative solutions to try to find ways that we can improve services. So I want to say thank you to you all for all your work on this, and we're looking forward to this being something that can be very positive for our community going forward, and allow us to move forward and serve our residents the best of our ability. So Jason, I'll let you give a quick description on the changes that are recommended here.
Sure. Thank you, City Manager. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrush, Assistant City Manager and Director of the Public Transportation and Parking Department. And in my role as Assistant City Manager, I have the pleasure of getting to work with the public safety departments. Therefore, I'm here today, as mentioned, to talk to you about three items, items WX and Y. And again, these three documents, the changes, I should say, that we have proposed for these three documents for council to consider, are really, as mentioned, just a continued, or should reflect basically a continued collaboration and partnership with the Emergency Medical Services Authority, or IMSA, as we work together to deliver emergency medical response, ambulance service, right, to the residents and visitors of Oklahoma City. So all of these documents kind of work together, right? They serve as the framework for how the service delivery is provided. And so if I could, what I would like to do is just kind of remind council of the purpose of each one of the documents, and then I will hit the major changes, or I should say, discuss the major changes collectively that those documents reflect. And you'll notice, and you probably did as you're reviewing your packets today, that there's a lot of relation between the documents. So for example, the interlocal agreement will refer to the uniform ambulance document. The interlocal agreement references the trust indenture. So there's a lot of kind of overlap, if you will. So I'll just describe the changes generally to those three documents. So the first item you have is item W. So this is the interlocal agreement. And as you know, interlocal agreements basically establish how multiple jurisdictions or multiple government entities can work together to provide a service to residents or constituents. And in this case, of course, the service we're providing collectively is ambulance service. The second item, the second amended and restated trust indenture, as you know, this is the document that really forms the IMSA trust, right? It really creates that entity. For example, this is the document where the trustees are identified. This is the document where the beneficiaries are identified. There's some language in there about, obviously, if the trust were to be dissolved, all those kinds of things you would expect to see in a trust indenture. And then finally, we have a ordinance change proposed for city council to consider. This ordinance change is amending Chapter 6 of the municipal code, also referred to as the ambulance code. And we are asking for introduction today with an emergency adoption on November 8. And the reason we're looking to amend the city's ambulance ordinance, if you will, is because as part of, as part of this framework of documents, there's a uniform ambulance code that the beneficiary cities, Oklahoma City, Tulsa, and IMSA, all sign off and agree to. And so once those entities agree to that uniform ambulance code, obviously, it's important that our municipal code reflects what the entities have agreed to in those documents. And so I'll hit what some of those changes are. But just to dwell just a minute longer on the ordinance changes that we're asking, that will bring our ordinances consistent with the uniform ambulance code. Uniform ambulance code is really that document where you're going to find some of the more, I would say, like, details about operations or service delivery. So for example, response time goals are set out in that uniform ambulance code. There's some language, for example, in there about the need or requirement for centralized call dispatch. The uniform ambulance code also, of course, supports the role of the medical director and the medical control board. And so those are the things that you'll find in the uniform ambulance code, and really, those changes that we're proposing are going to be in the ordinance. So if you look at those three documents, and you kind of go through there, and you say, well, what changes are we making as a council? The first major change, I would say, is that the major change, I would say, is that the documents as presented will allow IMSA to directly provide ambulance service. And in addition to that, IMSA would have the flexibility to contract for some service, or maybe even do both, right? And the whole idea of that is we were sitting down as a team was to try to come up, you know, recognizing that it's a challenging environment to deliver emergency medical service. It's a challenging environment to recruit. We kind of, as a team, wanted to look at it as like, would it be beneficial to have every tool we could at our disposal to provide emergency medical service response? And so the changes that are proposed would actually allow IMSA to continue with current model where they are providing service with IMSA employees, contract, or do a combination of both. The other new, and I think very helpful piece, is the agreements also allow for IMSA to enter into what we're calling special arrangement agreements with member cities so that if a member city would like to provide supplemental emergency response service, that city could. And so how that relates to Oklahoma City, of course, is, you know, Oklahoma City, obviously, we are, like all cities within the trust, our emphasis is on providing emergency medical response, providing appropriate patient outcomes. And so if we can supplement that existing IMSA service through our fire department, because as you're aware, we have paramedics within our fire department, then again, looking at our city or the western beneficiary, if you would, that just adds more resources, right? If the fire department can supplement some service. And so we anticipate working with IMSA to set up some parameters to provide some of that supplemental service. And again, it's really just a matter of identifying resources, both equipment, capital-type resources, but also human resources, people that have those skills, and how can we use them collectively between IMSA and, say, Oklahoma City if an agreement is negotiated to provide the best response we can. So that's a pretty significant change there. The other thing you'll find is some updated language related to medical control board clinical standards. And my short explanation of that would be, basically, there's some new language that says if the medical control board determines there's some change in standard, there's a process that they'll go through to kind of evaluate and communicate that. And then if there's a financial impact of more than $50,000 on a city, we'll have opportunities to provide input and understand and discuss. It's not something that's just thrown on us. So that's kind of a change there. The other thing is that, obviously, in the indenture, the trustees' names are updated. One of the other things that I want to mention is the window of opportunity has been eliminated. So again, if council accepts these changes, there will no longer be a window of opportunity. And for those of you that have, you know, been involved, I'm sure you have a lot of familiarity with that. But in short, basically, every five years, the beneficiary cities have an opportunity to withdraw from the trust if they choose to do so. And so the way we've restructured the language is we've basically set it up so the trust, like many other trusts, just kind of operates in, I guess, perpetuity, if you would, unless beneficiary cities withdraw or there's some reason to terminate it. But there's no longer this, okay, every five years, we have to decide, are we going to keep this trust going? And, you know, how are we going to make that happen? And I think the benefit to that really, and again, thinking about the partnership and the collaboration is, I mean, one, we have a long precedence of this trust being in existence. But again, you know, thinking of IMSA as an entity, I think is beneficial to them in terms of being able to recruit and develop employees, because now the game has changed a little bit, right? They have their own employees. They're not necessarily contracting. So, you know, to not have this window of opportunity kind of out there with their employees wondering, well, what's going to happen in five years? I think it's just beneficial in terms of being able to recruit and retain from their end, which, of course, ultimately benefits Oklahoma City. So with that, that's my explanation. I know the city manager mentioned I would be quick. Apologies if I went a little long, but there are a lot of details in there. And so I'll pause now if there's any questions, and then I will speak to the amendments that we would like council to consider.
I've got a couple of questions. One is, the performance of IMSA in Tulsa seems markedly better than the performance here. Why is that?
I'm going to say that, yeah, that is definitely the case. May turn it over to the chief to provide a little bit of detail on that.
And I can give a little bit, too. I'll give a little bit of background. One is that we were starting to have performance issues on the western district and losing staff prior to COVID. So not an excuse. It's just when we were with AMR, before they let AMR go, we were already losing staff and having staffing issues. Doing that in the midst of COVID then created, you know, it's like we got behind the curve. So I think that's really been a big part of trying to be on this uphill climb. The other factor that's there that just stays out there is we're such a large district that any time through the history, I was talking to a few people who've been around this a lot longer than even I have, and they were saying that areas where they've always had, the area where they've always had challenges with service is on the western district because it's such a large district. And that was really one of the reasons we worked through some of these solutions for, maybe if we could provide some supplemental service because we're such a large district to serve, or they would have the ability to contract a portion of the service. Those are just a couple of the challenges I know that have really continued to be. It's about staffing and having equipment on the street at the end of the day.
So, thank you for alluding to that. So IMSA currently has the equipment they need, right, to meet our required levels of service. They just don't have the staffing.
Yes, primarily staffing, exactly. And again, as the city manager had mentioned, that was one of the, I guess, main topics of our discussion and negotiations. And that's the reason why we discussed the idea of some supplemental service, being able to give IMSA as much tools, if you will, as they can. And as you know, or council knows, they've already, you know, made some decisions in that area to bring in some additional traveling paramedics, if you will, temporary staffing. So they're fully, I mean, they are fully aware of it, recognize it. And again, we're working to try to get it.
That step alone is really a big step. It creates its own challenges within staff, existing staff. But they're recognizing, hey, we've got to make whatever steps we can to try to shore this up. And so they're taking that step. The other amendment in this that Jason was talking to, too, allows them right now, they can either provide the service or they can contract. This will allow them to do both. If they chose, like in the outer areas, or I have no idea how the model would work. I'm not expert in that at any stretch. But they would have the ability to make decisions. Maybe there's parts of the city is served better by a contractor, and they focus on a core of the city. They just, we want to give them as many tools as we can and work together in partnership to try to help resolve this. But they are bringing those additional, the additional staffing there to the table right now to try to help resolve some of this.
So if we were able to offer a supplemental service, right, then where would that equipment come from? Wouldn't it be their overabundance in equipment?
No, they do not have a, say, overabundance of equipment. I mean, like a lot of fleet operations, you know, some of their ambulances are aged out, maybe beyond useful life. They're having a very difficult time replacing equipment. Again, not a surprise.
They're really long lead time getting those replaced right now. So they are short on equipment as well.
Yeah, I mean, not to, obviously, not to the degree of staffing, but equipment is a challenge as well. I mean, we see that, you know, even in the transit industry, trying to replace our ADA buses.
But correct me if I'm wrong, and any of you all can correct me, too. The way that's written in the agreement is that we could use their, if it's available, we could use their equipment. If it's not available, we'd have the ability to purchase our own equipment and have that available as well.
And, you know, to take that a step further, the precedent, or in the past, we've purchased ambulances, the city has purchased ambulances on behalf or the use of IMSA anyway. So if we can get hands-on, our hands-on ambulances for, let's say, the fire department to use, you know, we'd be buying ambulances anyway, to a degree, I guess is what I'm trying to get at.
How many ambulances did we buy for IMSA?
So I don't know the total number. Do you all have any idea on the count right now on the inventory of what we've got of the IMSA, of the ambulances in the agreement that the city has purchased?
We do have that identified. I don't think we have that number.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay. And it's been over a multiple year period.
Yeah.
I guess I just want to make sure that, I mean, if we paid for the ambulances, to me, if they aren't going to hit their required level of service, and if we do go down the path of supplemental, I mean, those should be our ambulances, right?
And we would have access to them. And so, and that's what it alludes to in the agreement, is that if it's available, they would provide it and make it available to us if there's, if there are ambulances that are available.
Good.
I mean, that would be clarified during the negotiations of this special services arrangement.
That's another really good point, is if we do this, I mean, what this does is allows for this additional service, supplemental service. It doesn't require it. It just allows for it. If we choose to do that, we have to get another agreement with them to work out the operations and how that would work so that we would manage, because all of it, we would be managing through IMSA. They would be in charge of ambulance service still. We would be working for them for contracting with them to provide that service. So we'd have more steps even than that in an operating agreement.
Which, of course, would come back to council.
City Manager, I think you might be the person to answer this. It could be Jason, just to clarify, some clarifying questions. One, the western district, it's Oklahoma City to where? What are, what kind of boundaries?
So it's Oklahoma City, and then it's any other cities that join into this as non-beneficiary cities. And right now, the only two other additional cities that are in are Edmund and Nichols Hills in the western district. Is that correct? That's right?
There's a couple.
How far west are those smaller cities, I guess is kind of my question?
This is going to be a long answer.
We let quick answers be shouted.
This is John Easley. She's the current executive, chief executive officer.
I'd like to say that I can answer that specifically, but we should have brought a heat map. But what you'll identify, looking at our heat map, and we can certainly provide that, is that most often, we are the only provider. And so even though our boundary may end geographically, those are still our calls because there is no other EMS service out there or that can get there within a reasonable amount of time.
For instance, that would be in an unincorporated area, right?
Okay. And then that staffing issue you mentioned, and that we've discussed in any of our council briefings, the one that existed prior to COVID, do we have a better understanding of from where that's coming from? Like, what is?
Watch what led to that.
Yeah. Or is that just an existential question that we don't have an answer?
Like, we're having staffing challenges with AMR already, leading into this, and then as IMSA took over, we've continued to have staffing shortages.
Sure. So I can address that briefly, you know, in as much as possible. As a traditional public utility model, where there is the authority and a contract for operational services, those services generally come from a large healthcare organization. So you needed to be of a certain size before you could even bid on services for IMSA. And so when you have traditionally a healthcare organization like AMR or GMR that have a national company, sometimes, and actually, we've seen it quite often, you know, you have some discrepancies in how a general or a local community organization should be run. And, you know, the mandates of a national company coming down from, you know, Colorado or wherever their headquarters are. So we always see some attrition relative to that. We've seen it in all of our contracting agencies. So when you go in, we've seen a national shortage in EMS providers long before COVID. We've had, you know, we are not known as an essential service. We are not identified, our national EMS short, workforce shortage has not been nationally identified like the nursing shortage, but it's been around for several years prior to going into COVID. So we've seen a reduction in those going into the EMS profession, which is why we are now, even post-COVID, that has exacerbated, and we are moving into growing our own completely.
Thank you. I think.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make this comment. The past two months, we've had several discussions about this issue. And I think the proposal that's being presented to us today is an excellent proposal. And I'm just speaking for myself, my understanding that it's the intention of the city for this to be a long-term working relationship with IMSA. We have no inclinations to terminate any kind of a relationship with IMSA. We want this to enhance an ongoing, long-term relationship with IMSA. So I'm just sharing with you my understanding and the efforts that's been made. And I appreciate yours and the chief's and Wiley's and everybody's efforts to put this together because it's been difficult. And there have been instances where the level of service could have been at a higher level, but we're working through those issues and trying to make the necessary improvements. And I think these agreements will go a long way in allowing us to achieve that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, I'm sorry, a follow-up question to the response we heard just a few moments ago. So am I hearing it correctly, then, that municipalities across the country, but most importantly ours, because that's where we are, would find themselves better served if they didn't have, if it weren't these large service providers, but instead more local service providers who were training and helping to hire the workers? Is that what I'm hearing? Or correct me where I'm wrong. I just want to make sure I'm hearing this correctly.
No, I mean, I thought, you know, there's certainly a larger feasibility study that should be done to address how individual communities, you know, should, what their service delivery model is. There's certainly a lot of advantage to a traditional public utility model in terms of buying power and resources and things of that nature. IMSA has always been a little bit different. We have been in both the Oklahoma City and the Tulsa market in that while we are a, we have been a traditional public utility model, so we have had an operations contractor. We've also had a pretty significant hand in how our operations work at the local level, which a lot of our other public utility model friends have not had. So I think I can't answer that for every jurisdiction everywhere. I can say that we're certainly, you know, our model hasn't changed since the public utility, the IMSA trust was established in the early 70s in Tulsa. And now is a great opportunity for us to look at that service delivery model and ensure that, as Mr. Fairbrush has said, ensure that we have every option and opportunity to deliver appropriate EMS care to our communities. And this is just a way to do that, to ensure that whatever it looks like, we can, you know, perhaps we are contracting for a smaller line of service rather than our entire operation. Perhaps it's just inner facilities, and these are just examples. So no one, you know, don't write this in stone, but perhaps it's a smaller line of service, inner facility line of service. Again, perhaps it's an agreement for special services with our municipalities. So we're really looking at trying to do this the most effectively and the most efficiently as an organization. But our goal is to ensure that we maintain service levels and excellent patient care.
Mayor Holt or, and/or councillors, Stone, Cyphrenstone, is this, city manager, is this a thing that our legislative committee, since you said there's no feasibility study that's happening at a federal level, but if this is a federal issue, it's nationwide, should we not be, you know, advocating for such a study to kind of help us better figure out what it sounds like? And I really appreciate your context. It just sounds like this is, I don't want to say, y'all know it's complicated. I'm just saying, like, what can we do to make sure we have the best research to really address what sounds like a systemic problem? Is that the right route? Or is there already work going on? I don't know. I'm just asking, I'm asking, not my area of expertise.
Yeah, I don't know that I've got an answer on that. It's like how we solve that nationally. For me, I still feel like I have to be really focused on what we're doing here and the options we're providing for ourselves to make sure we're being able to address this. It is a broader issue that, you know, everyone's wrestling with. I don't know that there's a one sol- with. I don't know that there's a one solution that's going to be able to solve this.
I think the other thing I'd like to say, and this is for our employees, Christmas before last, I got to experience Emsa working when my mother had a serious medical issue. And those guys were incredible. They went beyond the call of duty. And so, we may be shorthanded, but we have some really loyal and faithful employees, and I saw them in action, and I'm very proud of their work. Thank you.
Okay. If, so if no other questions, then I'd like to share two amendments with council.
Are the amendments on two different documents, right?
Yes, they are.
So there's emails flying around trying to clarify this. Would it be easier for Jason to describe, one, go ahead and amend that document, and then describe the second one?
Maybe, what documents are the amendments to, as far as our agenda goes?
The first, so the first amendment we would like council to consider would be to the interlocal agreement, which is item W.
Okay. And there's only one amendment to W?
Yes.
Why don't we do that first?
Okay.
Let's do that, then we'll pass W, then we'll move on and amend the next item.
Okay.
Okay. So how does, what's the amendment? Do you have something to hand out, or is it easy enough to state?
I think it's easy enough just to, they're, they're very, they're very minor.
Okay.
So on the interlocal, item W, page six of the interlocal, specifically paragraph six, section B, this is where the membership of the Emergency Physicians Foundation is described. Paragraph B describes who all is eligible to be in that group, if you will, from the, from the Western District or Western Chapter, okay? And the current language reads the Western Chapter shall be composed of the Medical Director, in parentheses, his or her permanent physician designee of the Emergency Department of each community-wide trauma rotation hospital. That's how it currently reads. We would like to add the language in the Western Division beneficiary member jurisdiction. So we're adding.
That's in paragraph B.
That's paragraph B, under.
May I make a motion, Your Honor?
To adopt the amendment?
To adopt the amendment.
As described by Jason.
As read into the record as to the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Okay. So this is an amendment to item W, as previously described. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Okay, now Jason, now you recommend approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement as amended. Okay, why don't we handle that?
Okay.
So if council wishes to make a motion for that. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Greenwell, if you had a chance to. Passes unanimously. Okay. Now what is the next item that you have an amendment to?
All right, next item is item X. That is the trust indenture. Specifically, we're looking at an amendment to exhibit B. And exhibit B lists some titles within Emsa. So currently, on exhibit B, paragraph A, there is a chief executive officer listed. There is a, in the documents you have, chief operations officer listed, and a chief financial officer listed. We got two of those titles we need to change. So the amendment would be that those three positions under paragraph A would read Chief Executive Officer, which it already says that, but the other two would be Associate Director and Assistant Director. So I guess another way of saying that would basically be, we're replacing Chief Operations Officer with Associate Director, and Chief Financial Officer with Assistant Director. That just gets the titles consistent with what Emsa is using.
I would, if appropriate.
It's on exhibit B. It's the very last page of that, oh, it's, you'll have to look at it, I think you'll have to look at it. Do you have your resolution there? Yeah, it's the very last page, and it's exhibit B. There's category A, I mean, there's paragraph A, and in paragraph A of exhibit B, it says Chief Executive Officer, Operations Officer, and Financial Officer, and we're just changing two of those titles to be consistent with what Emsa uses. And this is about the distribution of overhead costs, how they get allocated between the Eastern and Western District.
So does someone want to make the motion as described by Jason?
I would, I would move to amend the restated trust indenture, specifically exhibit B, as was read into the record by Jason just now.
Okay. Motion in a second. Cast your votes to adopt the amendment to item X. Passes unanimously. And that's your final amendment to X?
Yes, sir.
All right. Now we're on X as amended. Approval of the second amended and restated trust indenture. We could take a motion for that. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Do you have an amendment to the ordinance as well, Jason? Jason?
No, no amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. All right. Then we're on item Y. This is the ordinance to be introduced and set for final hearing. And as I understand it, though the city manager desires an emergency when we vote on November 8th, he also wanted to allow for some public input or transparency, that this would appear on at least two council agendas, and so that vote will not be held today. But he does need the emergency on November 8th, because the deadline is the end of November.
That's right.
And as, sorry to interrupt you, but as, as we work through this public hearing and the emergency vote for this, I hope that, in desire that we will have some type of plan in place as far as how we're going to educate the community for a couple things. One, this change, but two, the desperate need to fill these spaces with job opportunities, and to continue to talk about why this is needed, how we can respond better, and specifically, as we've heard some of those response times and difficulties, and even for our ears to hear, how if we fill these spaces, what the compensation is, and how immediately we can be able to have our residents do the work to help us be more effective and efficient in this, in this manner. So that's my desire, if we can work on that as we work towards this final vote. Please, thank you.
So today's vote is to introduce the ordinance, and we could take a motion on that for item Y. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. So this will be set for final hearing on November 8th, and at that time, city manager and his team will be hoping for an emergency as well. Okay, thank you all very much. All right. Item Z is to enter into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with the FOP. We can handle that at the end of our other business, but we'll go ahead and take the vote now to go into executive session. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then item AA is to enter into an executive session, session on advice of the municipal counselor, to receive confidential communications from attorneys concerning the four listed cases here. And again, we can handle that executive session at the end of our other business, but we can do the vote now. So we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. So we will go into those executive sessions after our other business, but there are no votes associated with them. Okay, AB, one, our claims recommended for approval. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes, we have Councilman Stone Cyphrenmark does not voting. Here we go. There we go. Passes unanimously. Okay, votes are concluded for the day, and we have arrived at item 12, comments from council. Ward one. I'm sorry. Oh, yes, yes, I know, I'm sorry. Oh, you were, you were expecting the typical tradition. I'm sorry, ward two.
Hello again, Mayor. Just some thank yous. One, thank you to the Britton District for inviting Councilwoman Nice and I to our recent, keep in mind, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I have some catching up to do, but we got to attend a Britton District event, where residents got to make their voices heard on improvements they'd like to see to the area. So I want to thank those organizers for that invite. Relatedly, that same evening, Councilwoman Nice and I attended a rehearsal, the OKC Ballet made open to the public, so we got to see dancers in a public space, still honing their craft for an upcoming show. And it's really neat, and they've been doing these a couple times. In fact, their acting director has recently just been appointed full-time, and so I wanted to say congratulations to Ryan as well. Wanted to thank the Windsor Hills neighborhood, which is a new addition to Ward Two, they're at Northwest 30th and Meridian, as redistricting happened. They invited me to attend a neighborhood meeting a couple weeks ago on a Saturday morning, and I got to hear their concerns. Surprise, surprise, it's homelessness is their number one kind of question. And so I was able to walk them through our state's trauma statistics, and as you heard Tim describe earlier, the work that we're doing at the city level. I got to share that with them. Lots of note-taking from those residents. They're very engaged. We should not be surprised they're very engaged, because that neighborhood is home to Councilman McAtee. And so, they're just an engaged community. And so I wanted to say thank you to them, thank you to Council McAtee for inviting me a few weeks earlier to attend Neighbor's Night Out, which he and Joanne, his wife, hosted. Congratulations to him, though I was out of town attending Embark's trip to the American Public Transportation Association Conference in Seattle. Congratulations to Councilman McAtee for Crystal Lake Park now bearing his name. Speaking of which, thank you to Embark for, and city staff for coordinating my trip to Seattle for that conference. It was incredible. I learned a lot about community land trust. They have a bus mural project where members of the community put public art on their bus shelters that tells the story of that specific area and its history, its contribution from Russian residents, Black residents, Jewish residents. I mean, some beautiful work that I shared on my Instagram story. And I couldn't help but notice, as I tagged Embark in Maps Four, that our Maps Four resolution has a 1% for public art. And so, I, I can't help but wonder what could those bus shelters be in telling our stories? But I just want to thank Embark, and I want to congratulate Ty Holly with Embark. She won for a video that she crafted. It was apta awarding us for best marketing and communication during the pandemic. Like, Ty did that. And this national, internationally recognized conference recognized her at a lunch that we got to attend, and Transit Trustee and Assistant City Manager Laura Johnson accepted that there with Ty, and it was really cool. And Ty and I took a really cool photo there. Thank you to UCO for inviting me to join up the American Folklore Panel Society to talk about LGBT history in Tulsa. Thank you to Rodeo Cinema Dead Center for asking me and Sunrise Tipicani to co-host a screening at rodeo that was well-attended, well over 100 people for Night of the Living Dead. So neat. And then finally, thank you to the Police Athletic League and to FACT for hosting me in two separate meetings, tours of their facilities and the work they're doing. And on that note, I'd like to conclude with a request. I asked them, who is your advocate during budget for these two programs? There is not, from them at least, and if we're wrong, we're wrong. They told me they did not have that advocate. And that strikes me as like a critical component, right? Because right now, what's happening is too often, these officers are having to turn to their own pockets or to nonprofits whenever they go out, particularly the Youth Enrichment Services Program, when they're going out and they're finding out that a kid's not in school, not because they hate education, but because they might have lice, and they have no medicine. And these officers are digging into their pockets, are turning to the private sector for that funding, and it just strikes me that with a 240-something million dollar police budget, surely, 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 if we are serious about crime prevention, we could address this at that root level by prioritizing, interrupting that cycle of crime, by making sure our kids never become part of that cycle. So I don't know, city managers, or someone who we can start, or is there someone already?
Look at it too, to see what expenditures we could do. Like, for instance, there are just limitations on what we can do within those programs. We'd have to look, work with legal on that.
I see what you mean, yeah.
We have budgets within those programs to help provide the services. So I just want to make sure that we, we look through that and have this conversation.
Yeah, I think it's critical work, because I think together with the stuff Tim's talking about, that we're up to, I think we can really interrupt these cycles of crime and generational poverty, but Pal and FACT are going to be pivotal partners to do that work.
Yeah, that is often why, a lot of times, those programs will have like a nonprofit associated with them, because they have a lot more flexibility on how they can spend some of the money with, with helping the kids individually, with personal assistance. And they can do that easier through a nonprofit than through the city. And so, it's something we have to work through.
And if we find out that that's all the case, then it might be really worth someone from those two entities sharing with these nonprofits the, the true nature of their needs.
Needs are.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
All right, word six.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank OKC Beautiful and Gabe Breedman and Scissor Tail Park. On Saturday, they hosted a ribbon cutting for a new piece that Gabe and Denise Duong worked on. I believe Gabe was sort of the main artist, and then Denise added an additional component, but it is a trash monster. It is made fully of trash that was collected from around the city. And even, I believe, there was a litter pickup during the event that they involved folks to then go install pieces of trash as a way to raise awareness about, you know, our excessive reliance on single-use items, and our issues with overconsumption and disposing of items, but also to just provide a kind of neat activation of the lower park. I know we have plans for our 1% for art to fund some public art in, in the lower park, but kind of neat to see this opportunity come up, and just really want to thank OKC Beautiful for hosting a really great program. They had events for, or activities for kiddos, and I think even the adults seemed to enjoy those, that were educational and just really a neat opportunity to bring folks from different parts of the community together. And again, just want to thank Gabe and Denise for their work in putting this together, and something so fun and creative and kind of whimsical, but also sending a message, and maybe hopefully helping folks think about their impact on our environment, and specifically on the river, and how litter and trash really affects the health and well-being of our, our riverfront. So really appreciate OKC Beautiful for facilitating that, and Scissor Tail for their agreement and partnership, and just appreciate all the work they're doing to make Oklahoma City beautiful.
Word seven?
Yes, I wanted to reiterate that. I actually, I saw a picture of it, and the name doesn't do it justice. There was a young lady visiting here from Atlanta that took a picture in front of the trash monster. And I said, what is that? And she was telling me about the art. So clearly, it resonated with a lot of folks and visitors coming in to be a part of, of seeing our art and what we're doing in our city. Definitely shows how we are bringing Definitely shows how we are bringing more art and want people to be a part of what is to come and what is for the art scene in Oklahoma City. I just have a couple of things. I know, I just want to say I heard Brick or Treat was outstanding yesterday. I was on the phone talking to a friend, and he could not maneuver down in Bricktown because of it, so clearly that was a well-attended event. Also want to thank Oakdale Public Schools and Superintendent Pierce. I was invited along with the County Commissioner Carrie Blumer for a ribbon cutting for their playground. They have a brand-new playground, and it is absolutely gorgeous. And to be able to just step on the campus and see a lot of our kiddos, and that was my first time visiting the school as far as students are concerned, so very grateful that I was able to visit and see what Oakdale Public Schools are doing for our community. Today is the last day for the Eastside Fresh Market, so it's at OSU OKC from four to seven. Just wanted to make that awareness out there. And Metropolitan Library System, I wanted to bring this up because I saw this yesterday. I think it's the coolest thing. There's a Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So what it is, is a program that provides monthly books to children ages zero to five for free, and all you have to do is register your kids, and you'll start receiving those books within six to nine weeks. So very grateful for this kind of partnership, and this is why it's important to become a friend of the library, so we can have more programs such as this for our community and for our young people in achievement and enrichment in reading. I wanted to mention Langston University. We had a tremendous gift that was donated. That's my alma mater. Friday, went to the gala. I've been holding on to this information for a while, so I'm so glad it finally came out Friday. But congratulations to Langston University and the Broadcast Journalism Department. I am a graduate, proud graduate of the Broadcast Journalism Department at Langston University in Channel Nine, and Griffin Communications donated the building and all of the fixtures for their current News Nine station to Langston University, which is in total a $10 million gift, and this is the largest gift in school history. So for the Griffins to see the importance of broadcasting and for minorities to be a part and to cultivate minorities such as HBCU, the only historically Black college and university this side west of our country, speaks to a whole new precedence that's going to resound for the students at Langston University and tell a different story of broadcasting for our country and our nation. So just imagine, you know, if you've ever toured this facility, how big it is, and now that belongs to Langston. So they will officially have their own Oklahoma City campus to call home, and I can't wait because it's not far from where I live, so I'll probably be walking down there as much as I can to say hello to everyone. But just again, for someone local to see the potential in our community and our people that are a part of how we cultivate our city and our state, and to pour into those lives that they can have a pipeline for them to be a part of broadcasting. I think everyone, not I think, I know, everyone was overwhelmed by that gift, and again, thank you to Mr. Griffin and the family, the Griffin family, for believing in Langston University and the sustainability of this program. A couple other things. School Buy and Community Forum is going to be held at Metro Tech this Thursday from six to eight. I was asked to mention that from the Oklahoma City Black Alumni Coalition. And on Saturday, there's a couple trunk or treats, but there's going to be one specifically from 1:30 to four at the Homeland Parking Lot. And then on Sunday, from four to six, there's going to be a trunk or treat at Garden Oaks Community Center. And then on Halloween, there's going to be another one from six to eight at the ICE Event Center Parking Lot. So a lot of ways to stay active in our community, so very grateful again. I'm overwhelmed and excited about what has just happened with Langston University.
Ward eight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Oklahoma Bar Association, which is a statewide association made up of our lawyers across the state, overseen by the Oklahoma Supreme Court, has announced that Mike Knopp is the recipient of the 2022 Trailblazers Award. The award states that "trailblazers forge ahead where others might falter," and Mike has definitely forged ahead for what he's done for us as Executive Director of the River Sport Foundation. The announcement states, "Mike has led Oklahoma City's movement toward a more active outdoor culture, created meaningful change in thousands of young lives, and brought the Olympic movement to the Oklahoma River. Today, River Sport and Oklahoma City Boat House District stand as a testament to his vision and the willingness of our city to embrace bold ideas." Congratulations, Mike. Second, I wanted to mention that I wanted to thank the mayor and council today for approving the consulting agreement that will allow Lone Oak Park to go forward. The one thing I've learned when you're trying to develop a new park, you deal with local, state, and federal issues, and one of the issues that Lone Oak has had to deal with is FEMA, which FEMA just finally gave its approval to move forward on July 27. And I especially want to thank Estella Hernandez from Senator Langford's office. We wouldn't be here right now working on a consulting contract but for her efforts to deal with FEMA, so I'm very appreciative of everything she did. Finally, I want to thank Chief Gorley today for a briefing on the Real Time Crime Center. I think this is cutting edge. I think it's state-of-the-art. I think it gives us a new tool to fight crime, and I hope our local press will pick up on this, and as it's developed, I hope people will see how important of an additional tool this is to Oklahoma City's Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. No one has signed up under item 13, Citizens to Be Heard, so we will go to executive session and then return.